Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Tolsenberg Town Council Meeting, March twenty seventh. We have a full house. I welcome everyone. Just remind everyone to please keep silent when others are speaking. We're going to be doing a bunch of planning matters and whether you're in favor of or opposed of, there will be opportunities to speak, and I will indicate those times that are available. Today, we recognize the indigenous peoples as the customary keepers and defenders of the great turtle island, its waters and its lands. We honor their long history in welcoming others to this beautiful territory. Our aim is to uphold and uplift their voices and values as a host nation. Now we'll turn to the adoption of the agenda, Councillor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Luciani, that the agenda is prepared for the council meeting of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, before I ask if there's any questions, just remind councillors, we don't usually speak as close into our mics, but we could speak closer into our microphones tonight so that the speakers in the hallway will adequately carry our voices. So does council have any questions regarding the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor as agenda prepared, and that is carried. Disclosures, epicunary interest, and general nature thereof. Seeing none, we move to the adoption of council minutes of the previous meeting, Councillor Roseheart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Spencer, that the council meeting held minute council meeting minutes dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, errors, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried as well. Now we're moving to public meetings. It's an application for official plan amendment, draft plan of subdivision known as Victoria Woods. This is a public meeting held under the Planning Act for the purpose of hearing zone change application, ZN seven dash two-two dash zero-five. This process allows any person in attendance the opportunity to speak to the application. If anyone who appeals this decision has not provided council with oral or written submissions at the public meeting, then the local planning appeal tribunal has the power to dismiss the appeal. If you speak to the applications, please state your name and sign your name and street address at a sheet located at the podium. The planner will now give us an overview of the zone change application, so I'll turn it over to Eric. Thank you. Oh, before I do that, I just want to welcome back Sheena. And I would also like to say the deputy mayor is absent because he is on town business this evening. So Eric, it's all yours.
Thank you. These are applications for official plan amendment, draft plan subdivision approval and zone change. The official plan amendment would revise the boundary of the present high and medium density designations, would also provide for the creation of an additional medium density residential block. And the zone change proposes a number of site-specific residential zones to facilitate the proposed subdivision plan. The lands are south of Concession Street, west, west of Quarter Town Line, and have frontage on Quarter Town Line, Concession Street, west, the end of Esselton Drive, the future extension of Durham Drive, Grandview Drive, as well as Western Drive to the south. The proposed plan of subdivision will consist of twenty-six blocks for single detached dwellings, three blocks for a mix of single detached dwellings and townhouse dwellings, two blocks for townhouse dwellings, two blocks for medium density development, and one block for high-density residential development. It also includes one park block, two blocks for stormwater management, three walkway, walkway blocks, all served by nine new local streets and extensions of Esselton Drive, Durham Drive, and Grandview Drive. At this time, the exact composition of the residential units is not known, but the range of units that could be accommodated ranges from six hundred ninety-nine at the low end up to one thousand one hundred and thirteen if all the lands are developed as per the maximum permitted density. In support of the applications, a functional servicing report, a planning justification report, archaeological assessment report, environmental impact study, a transportation impact study, and a geotechnical and slope stability report were also submitted. The lands are a hundred and ten acres with fifteen point three of those acres being located outside of the town boundary in the township of South Oxford. These planning applications this evening are only applicable to the lands within the town of Tolsenberg. The plan was originally submitted in twenty, July of twenty twenty-two, and there was a number of revisions made in response to comments provided by staff, including a revised parkland layout, revised location of a medium density block, as well as revised street network and some additional pedestrian connections. The requested zoning provisions, I'll just bring the report starting at page ten or page eight, sorry. But I'll just give you a brief summary of those. For the high-density block, it's proposed to also include some non-residential uses, including a daycare, a health office, a personal service establishment, convenience store, drugstore, and coffee shop, as well as allow for a multiple-unit dwelling in the form of a stacked townhouse to provide relief of the required children's outdoor play area and provide reduced setback between apartment buildings on the same lot. For the medium-density blocks on the north part of the plan, as well, there are the same provisions have been requested, including limited non-residential uses consisting of a daycare, a health office, a personal service establishment, convenience store, drugstore, and coffee shop, as well as reduced setback between buildings on the property. Also reduced minimum lot area per dwelling unit for for multiple unit and apartment dwellings, reduced front yard for multiple unit dwellings and apartment dwellings, reduced exterior sideyard width, rear yard depth, and interior sideyard width. For the special low-density three-zone, which would permit a single detached dwelling as well, so big to the R two provisions, there's also relief requested for townhouses to reduce them in the lot area for both interior and end units, reduced lot area for corner lots, reduced lot furnages for interior end and end units on corner lots, reduce the front yard depth from six meters to four point five meters for the main building, but maintaining the six meters for the, where there's an attached garage. So that will ensure that you can still provide at least one parking stall in the driveway. And the parking space requirements are five point five meters, so that's six meters will provide for in addition, will provide for the required parking, as well as there's increase to the maximum rated lot coverage to fifty-five percent. And then for the R two lots, for the R two zone properties, Fox twenty and twenty-one, which we did, but Baldwin Place, minimum lot frontage of twelve point one meters is proposed to be required, which is greater than the ten point five meters that's required in the regular R two zone. Reducing the minimum lot area for a corner lot from four hundred and fifty square meters to three hundred and sixty square meters, reducing the lot furniture for a corner lot from fifteen meters to twelve meters, and the same reduction in the front red depth for the main building. So the main building could be four point five meters from the street line, but where the garage is in the parking space would have to maintain the six meters. The comments received from the county and town agencies and the conservation authority are detailed in the report, and the conditions that they've requested are included as proposed conditions of approval. The school board did note that there'd be a clause included in the subdivision agreement, which would say that if there is not enough school capacity in the area, the land, the students would be designated as a holding zone, and they could be assigned to any school in town. So just because they live in that area, for example, wouldn't guarantee that they would attend Westfield Public School if there are capacity constraints, which is a standard clause in the Latims Valley District School Board has asked for throughout the county. But that would give notice to future purchasers that their children may not attend Westfield if there is not, if there's not capacity within that school. Notice a complete application was provided on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, and a notice of public meeting was issued on March thirteenth. And we have, we have received and councils received concerns from the public respecting traffic density and land use compatibility from residents from adjacent developments. With respect to the overall appropriateness of the planning applications, staff want to highlight that the proposed traffic impact study was prepared by Paradigm Transportation Solutions. It did identify a number of improvements that would be required on Quarter Town Line and Broadway and Concession Street, specifically from this development, and there's proposed conditions of approval that that be required, be implemented prior to the subdivision be finally approved, as well as there are other recommendations that would occur, whether this development move forward or not. So those recommendations are within the study. The applicant submitted environmental impact study as there was, there is significant valleylands and woodlands on the property, and the property is within fifty meters of fish habitat. The study was peer-reviewed, and there are a number of recommendations that are required to be implemented, again through the conditions of draft approval, including compensation for the area to be removed, a tree protection plan to be submitted, depicting the size, species, and condition of trees to be removed and trees to be protected, requirements on location of fill and stockpiling of soil during certain calendar periods to, for the protection of bank swallows, monitoring of tree health for at least nine months following post-construction to identify problems that may surface following construction, requirement for chain link fencing along real lot lines that are adjacent to natural heritage features, as well as a development of educational homeowner brochure for lots that would back onto the southern natural heritage feature as well as the hedgerows. Again, these conditions are, these recommendations are included as a condition of draft approval. The applicant submitted a functional servicing report indicating how the property can be serviced through water, to the presence of existing water means, and their extensions as well as sanitary servicing. The stormwater mansion for the city will have two ponds, one in the north, just north of Westfield, which will handle the northern portion of the draft plan, and the other to the south, which would handle the balance of the lands. With respect to the official plan amendment, the subject property at the northern portion of budding concession street west has two existing designations. One is high-density and one is medium-density. Those have been in place since at least the nineteen seventy-five Oxford County Official Plan. The applicant's proposing to change the location slightly and the size slightly of those two designations to fit the proposed road network, as well as there's an additional medium-density block proposed immediately west of the Westfield Public School property. And then the parkland block would be west of that additional medium, medium-density block. Staff opinion that this additional proposed density block, medium-density block will be appropriately buffered from low-density residential environment, will be adequately serviced, and will have access to Esselton Drive to the south and Durham Drive to the north, and it's sufficiently large to provide the required parking and amenity areas. The development of that block will likely be subject to site plan control, where town and county staff will have opportunity to review the proposed plan with respect to servicing, landscaping, buffering, fencing, lot grading, and other technical matters. With respect to the proposed street network, the extension of Esselton Drive and the Western Drive were identified in the official plan as collector roads, and the road widths of these two roads are twenty-two meters, which is greater than the typical twenty-meter right-of-way width. So staff with the opinion that the access to these planned collector roads is appropriate, as well as Durham Drive was designed as well to be a collector road, and will be sufficiently large to provide the required sanitary outlet and stormwater conveyance. The exact location and mix of dwelling types has not been determined, as I indicated. They'll have to be declared and determined prior to the submission of the detailed engineering design drawings. However, you know, based on the medium and maximum density requirements, the high-density block on the north along Concession Street is expected to accommodate anywhere from two hundred to three hundred and fifty-five residential units, and the medium blocks would accommodate a hundred and twenty-one to two hundred and thirty-nine units. Within the low, the low-density residential area, which is the most of the plan, particularly the southern portion of the plan, it would include a mix of single detached dwellings, semi-detached, and street funding townhouse dwellings, which is permitted in the low-density residential policies. The staff have the opinion that at this time it's appropriate to rezone those portions to the proposed zoning as the dwelling types are permitted in the low-density designation policies. With respect to the proposed zoning, staff have some concern with the commercial uses in the high, high and medium-density blocks, specifically the office use and the the drugstore use. The convenience store, daycare, personal service establishment, and eating establishment exclusive of a drive-through can be considered appropriate neighborhood serving uses, which are permitted in the, in the residential areas. However, the, in light of the strong policy direction in the official plan, the direct retail uses and office uses to the central area, and given the proximity of this property to the downtown, and given the absence of detailed floor plans and unit sizes, staff recommend that the proposed medical center and drugstore not be approved at this time. The reductions to the minimum distance between buildings can be considered appropriate as the interior building code is a more appropriate way to regulate the separation between buildings. And again, the development of these blocks will be subject to site plan control. The reductions to the minimum lot area per unit will allow for increased density. However, the applicant has not requested any parking relief, so they will have to meet the parking requirements of the zone, zone villa, which is one point five spaces per unit. The zoning provisions for the, the street funding townhouse blocks in both the median-density zones and the R three zones will provide for increased building envelopes and smaller townhouse blocks of four units, and will affect other townhouse blocks approved and developed in the town in the last five years, specifically in Andrews Crossing and Northcrest Phase One and Phase Two. The, most of the relief requested really boils down to making the lot smaller from eight units blocks to four unit blocks, so you have two more corner units, so it typically requires more area. The reduced lot friends, lot area and interior sideyard widths will still provide for the two parking spaces divided to per each unit, one in the driveway, one in the private attached garage, and through the driveway widths, there's opportunity to, to get, in some cases, to get two parking spaces side by side for the townhouse units. The zoning provisions for single detached dwellings will permit a reduced lot furniture area for corner lots, but would require a larger furniture of twelve point two meters rather than the ten point five meters for lots that back onto Baldwin Place. Reduced front yard depths are proposed. However, I've noted before that reduced front yard depth only applies to the main building. The garage will still maintain the required six-meter front yard depth to ensure that the parking is provided on site on the private driveway. And this is the same, this is the same as the one point five meter objection that's permitted for a covered porch. So without this provision, only a covered porch would be allowed to be at four point five meters. This will allow any part of the main building, if you don't have a covered porch, to be at four point five meters, but would still maintain the six meters to the parking area and the garage. At this time, as there are no individual lot lines being created, the development will be reviewed by building and planning staff for zoning compliance, both at time of building permit submission, as well as it's typical, it's likely that the lots will be created through the exemption to part law control, which was how Baldwin Place was developed and a number of other places in town have been developed. So the zoning review and zoning check will happen through that, that process. Overall, staff are satisfied that the proposed development is consistent with a bunch of policy statement and supports the initiatives and objectives of the official plan, and recommend approval subject to the noted conditions in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Now I will open it up to councillors to question the planner. Councillor Roseheart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Eric. Eric, is there a reason why we're not putting any roundabouts in any of the subdivisions that we do? In a lot of the cities right now, that that seems to be favorable, so it slows down traffic?
Mrs. Mayor, we have approved roundabouts in, I think, Lindbach Phase Two, or Phase, there's one on Phase Two, North and North Street. There's a roundabout at a intersection of two collector roads. At this point, it's kind of been developer-driven. I don't think town staff have identified a preference for roundabouts, but that's something that we could look to in the future.
Thank you.
Just to remind the council, speak, speak up and speak directly into the mics. Would you like to continue, Councillor Roseheart?
No, thank you.
I do think that Councillor Roseheart raised a good point because when we're building developments out like this, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of houses, and we have to look at traffic calming measures within those streets as well. You know, there's been errors done in the past, and, and now we're, we're reeling from increased volume and traffic complaints. So I, I do think that that's a valid point. Any other questions? To Eric? No? Okay. I will, then. So on page twenty-five, sorry, I just got to get my computer screen there. It's special medium density in its blocks thirty-three and thirty-four, and it says that the maximum number of dwelling units per multiple-unit dwelling not apply to any stacked houses or back-to-back townhouses. So now in my research, am I correct in saying, Eric, that it would be eight dwelling units per building is what normally the code speaks to?
For a street funding townhouse, yeah, the typical has been eight units. After that, the building code requirements for fire separation become significantly more difficult.
Okay, so in this proposal, it's asking for an unlimited number. And so number one, I question, okay, obviously, there's a fire code issue which you just raised. Secondly, how does this qualify for medium density if it's an unlimited number of units?
Presuming for that block would still set out a minimum lot area per unit. So if you have, if the block, say, is a thousand square meters, each unit requires a hundred square meters, you can only fit ten without coming back to council for an increase in the, a decrease in the minimum lot area per unit. So the density isn't necessarily captured by the number of, not to number of units per building, it's also captured by the lot area requirements.
Okay, maybe that's a question I'll ask to the planner to, or the, or the applicant once they get up here. Water. So the county, I did, I did see that there's provisions in here that certain stages of the development will be dependent on the study from the county. The study of the county, is that looking only at residential? I'm not overly familiar with it. I think it was put together before I got onto County Council. Is it looking at residential, is it looking at the entire town? And part of my concern is, do we have enough water for industrial moving forward? So how do developments like this affect our future industrial growth? Will this all be determined in that study?
The county is undertaking a water and wastewater master plan. So the master plan looks at both, like, all water users, so residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, as well for, for South Oxford, Southern Oxford. There is a long-term proposed water interconnection between Norwich, Otterville, Springfield, and then connecting into Tolsenberg through the county-owned former railway lands on, off of Cranberry. So the intention is to link all three water supplies together to provide additional redundancies through the transportation master plan, or sorry, water wastewater master plan. They're also identifying additional needs for water storage. So the county is looking at an additional potential water storage source in the southern portion of the downtown to provide water supply for firefighting purposes, which long-term could be a concern. So it is on the radar, I believe, though the master plan was supposed to come back to County Council, I believe, second or third quarter of this year for review and approval.
Thank you. So just to clarify, though, then, those phases cannot proceed forward until we're absolutely one hundred percent sure that the water capacity exists? Is that correct?
Yes, there's a condition in the draft approvals.
I do remember reading it.
Yep. Prior to mission number twenty, prior to the final approvals of the vision plan, the owner shall receive confirmation from the County of Oxford Public Works that there's sufficient capacity in Tolsenberg water and wastewater or sanitary sewer systems. So how that is operationalized is prior to the sign-off of the final subdivision plan for registration. An applicant or developer has to provide a letter from Oxford County Public Works saying that there is sufficient water capacity for that phase of the registering.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I did see the school board comments. Can't say, you know, in the next report, we have Southridge School is full. This report says Westfield School, so I didn't get really sure where they're going to shuffle the students to. So that is a concern, and just from a planning perspective, I think we should need to raise awareness to it. I've never seen comments from THI, so does THI ever provide agency comments?
Typically, they only provide comments at the detailed design. They're circulated at the draft plan application stage, and they keep it, they have a running tally of projects that are coming up to happen, but they typically don't provide comments at this stage. It's more of the, the detailed design to get involved.
Okay, so just raising awareness to it, I would be concerned about capacity, as we, you know, have been having those discussions. So I guess that will be flushed out through that next stage, then. Does anyone else from council have any questions? To the planner, Councillor Parker?
Just further to that last question, just further to that last question. Eric, with THI not providing comments now, have they reviewed the application in fall, and do they believe that there's enough hydro to support this development?
I've spoken to the hydro tech, Derek, and he's aware of the, like, these three subdivisions to make happening at the same time. They don't have specific capacity concerns, but the capacity is on a first-come, first-served basis. So if, if one developer comes forward and registers first.
Sorry, please, I really need everyone to remain quiet so we can get through these questions and move forward. Thank you.
And if it comes to light that there isn't enough capacity for another plan, then that other plan may not. Receive the capacity first, but at a high level, they didn't express concern. Uh they didn't express concerns with the overall number of units.
Follow up uh Mary Gilvaysey to Eric. So I I guess I have some concerns with that, especially from the de-. On the development side, the developers put. The money into putting their plan together and everything like that, and we're not doing a review of the hydro capacity. Before this goes forward. That, to me, that's a concern. Um because it regardless of this is to go through or not. Um I think that all that information needs to be made available during the planning process moving forward because um I would. Uh for any developer moving forward, not just this one. Is.
I defer to later on to the applicant's agent. Uh from CJDL who deals more directly with Elizabeth Hydro.
Council Spencer. Through you, Mayor, to Eric. Um I noticed a small portion on there about public consultation, clearly. We've got a lot of public here. Um I I I was given a book about Baldwin Place uh by somebody from Baldwin Place and. The third word in it is adult community, and I'm just wondering when there's planning, how much consideration? Is given to that um because I don't think this is a case of nimbyism and not wanting, you know. This development or development in general, but just not to change the rules halfway through the game, so. I'm just um asking how much? Of the public consultation has weight when doing the planning process? Um this is just a question as a new councillor. Thank you.
You might have made a concert Spencer's question. So generally, if there's incompatible land uses, um we certainly work hard to. Um mitigate those and provide compatibility. Generally. Residential residential isn't considered uh incompatible land use. Um we're not allowed to zone for the type of people who occupy the dwellings. We can just zone for the dwellings. Uh typically, uh lower density development. A budding lower density of residential development uh wouldn't be considered incompatible, so you could have a. Two story next to a one story. Um. The developer in this case hasn't asked for a relief to. Um construct dwellings taller than the eleven meters that's permitted in the R two zone. Um. And in this case, they have uh agreed, or they have in uh introduced. Um. A greater lot fundage and and what would be required. So they are potentially losing a couple of lots because of the additional two and a half meters for those two blocks. Um. Given that staff don't believe there's really a compatibility issue between the two uses.
Further, uh thank you. Um the the point I I think I'm trying to make and and the concern is that this is an adult community, right? And like they're given two resident or two adults uh per residence, there's no children residing in there. Many of them have moved from all over Ontario under the premise of this being their new community, adult community. So to open it up to families where children would be playing right beside them, that sort of thing. That's not put into consideration, or it's just the residential zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just residential zoning. Um those stipulations in Baldwin Place are private governance. But the town has no control over, uh the county did not require, so it's. It's a private agreement between uh the all of the landowners. Um as such, we don't really get involved with with uh and on that that aspect of it.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for the planner? Seeing none, we will um. Now there is an opportunity for the public, the applicant or agent to speak in favor of the application. So anyone in favor? Um Andrew, are you speaking or?
Here he is.
Okay, welcome.
Use the mouse to scroll down.
Thank you. Oh, good evening. And Madam Mayor, there's a council and. Everyone here from the public, I'll do my best to speak loudly and. I understand those in the hall probably can't see the presentation, so I'll also try my best to describe what we're showing on the screen. Uh my name is Andrea Sinclair. I'm a planner with MHPC Planning here in support of the application. Um we've reviewed all of the comments that have come through the circulation. We've also. Um viewed the presentation that was before council two weeks ago, and I will do my best to address um. Some of those concerns as I work through this presentation. Sorry. Uh so this has already been mentioned by Mr. Gilbert, but what we wanted to just. Set out with is what's the existing planning framework, because that really informed a lot of the design for this subdivision. So right now the lands are already designated for residential purposes. They have been um since this version of the official plan was put in place. And then further to that. The lands are further designated with a mix of high density, median density and low density residential, so you'll see. Sort of the um darker purple color at the top along concession is high density. The I'll call it the pinkish color is the medium density. Uh and the rest intended to be more low density. So you can see that in the official plan, the density was really concentrated to the north. Of the property along concession street. You'll also see, um it's a symbol that looks like a picnic table that indicates that a park was intended to be provided within this property. Further, the official plan designates various types of roads, so. The roads, the majority of roads within the Baldwin Place community are considered local roads, that's the black lines. But what you'll see on this is that Esseltime Drive, um Weston Drive. And Durham Drive are all designated collector roads with the intent that these would provide uh would be extended to the west. And then some of the other surrounding roads, concession, Quarter Town uh Line, New Road and Baldwin Street, they're all designated arterials. So collector and arterials is where the majority of traffic is supposed to go to avoid having um. Large amounts of traffic on the local road system. So those existing official plan informs several of the key design elements of the proposed draft plan as I'll walk through this evening, so. Similar to the official plan, the medium and high density residential has been focused to the north of the subdivision. Where it will be accessed out to concession street and weighting that density further to the north uh as directed by the OP. We've provided a park. You'll see that in this subdivision, it's actually shifted more to the south, um closer to the school and more central. That was at a direct uh response to the park department's comments that wanted one larger park central to the neighborhood. So in earlier versions of the draft plan, we actually had two smaller parks uh spread out, but this was revised in response to those comments. Uh the extension of Esseltime Drive to the west, um you'll see that in the official plan schedule, which is shown left of screen. It actually shows it going right out to the urban boundary. We've um not extended it to the urban boundary with the hopes that Durham Drive will provide a little bit more of that collector function. And Esseltime will be a little bit more of a local road, even though it is um designated collector, and that's in large part because of the way. Baldwin Place developed with a number of driveways coming out to Esseltime, and we know that there's more ability for conflict um when that happens, so. The um what we've tried to do is minimize the number of additional driveways that'll be on this street by providing the park frontage. And the medium density block, which will only have one access out to Esseltime, um if any at all. And then having the um connection from Weston Drive. So again, this is in the designation, in the official plan as a designated. Uh collector that was intended to extend. We had an earlier version of the draft plan where that extension, the road connection was further south. And that was moved um further north to avoid removal of the hedgerow feature and preserve as many of the trees. Along the western boundary as possible. So the location of where we've got that um road sub extending to the west. Is a direct result of what our environmental consultants recommended. Uh as Eric mentioned, we've um the official plan amendment would add an additional medium density block. This is really intended to provide um like a clustered townhouse development. It could be bungalow towns, um. Townhouses that are in more of a condominium format uh and located close to the school, so it provides. Access for um those families, and that's just to provide a little bit of um additional dens- density central to the plan. Um while most of the lands to the south are a lower density. Intent. So uh just going through some of the merits of the application in terms of planning merits. This application does uh include a full range of housing types and a mix of housing sizes, and that is important in terms of affordability. Allowing people to age in place and allowing there to be more than one housing type available. The subdivision's been designed to encourage walkability, and I'll I'll get to all these points in more detail. Uh it's been designed as a complete community. Natural features have been protected and retained where possible, and where there is going to be any removals. Compensation planting is going to be required, and the result of this being that when this development's fully built out, we expect there to be. Uh significantly increased number of trees on the property when compared to what's there currently. Um the design of the road network actually has been designed to disperse traffic. And slow it down, and I'll I'll get into that in a bit more detail, because I know there are a lot of traffic concerns tonight. The design of the subdivision has been done with considerations to the existing surrounding development, and I'm talking specifically about. Those lots that directly back onto the subdivision, and again, we'll get into that in more detail. And the design of the subdivision has evolved in response to circulation comments. So in terms of the full range of housing types and a mix of housing sizes, um I don't want to read too much what's already been said by Mr. Gilbert, so. There is uh the proposal includes low density residential uses such as single detached street townhouses. Um the medium and high density blocks will allow for a full range of multiple dwellings, including towns, um bungalow towns, stacked town. Homes and apartments. And again, having a full range of housing types does help to address housing affordability and allows people to stay in their neighborhoods. Longer, and I'll maybe just on this point, just before I forget, um Madam Mayor had the question about um the. Number of units per block. That was really only um because the zoning byla currently only contemplates a street townhouse type of model, so if you picture. Uh something like a back to back, you would probably have those eight units and then eight in behind, so it would be sixteen not. Eight, otherwise you'd be designing little blocks of four, which um doesn't really make sense, so. We can take a look at that and and certainly put in a maximum for those other types. It wasn't the intent that we would have. An endlessly long block of of units. It's more just that the zoning. Doesn't quite contemplate the types of uses that we're now seeing more demand for as. People are finding the single detached and the street towns are out of their price point, so um that's certainly something we'll take away tonight, and I think we can address. A maximum per block. Uh in terms of walkability, and it's might be hard to see, but what we've done here is the central park, and then you'll see a white. Sort of dash circle as well as the two parks in Baldwin Place, we've applied the same, so that white circle indicates a typical. Five minute walking distance, so this just is to intended to show that. All of the residents of this development, as well as a number of the residents and surrounding developments, will be within a five minute walk of a public park. Also shown on this diagram in yellow is sort of the trail sidewalk walkway system that will allow for. Various trail loops and connectivity throughout the plan and out to some of the surrounding. Trail networks, so each of the swim blocks are being designed to have a trail loop within them. Um the south swim block and. Apologies, as the plan is oriented kind of the wrong orientation, but the right side of the screen is south. Um is also intended to have trail connections out to the rail trail to the south. In terms of complete communities, some of the comments we heard through circulation was that. There should have been some commercially designated lands within this area. Um the official plan has designated everything as residential, but we saw the potential along concession street that. There may be um the desire to have some commercial uses. That's why the zoning we proposed has had some limited commercial uses, so that. In down the road when those blocks develop, if someone wants to do mixed use, or they want to do. You know, a small coffee shop or convenience store, that they could do some of those commercial uses, recognizing that there's um. Not a lot in this immediate area, so that's something we thought would help make this more of a complete. Community. Um as well, that there's going to be um the park within this neighborhood, trail connections, walkway clock. Connections, and we are adjacent to an existing. School. In terms of the um natural features, so the most significant being the woodlot at the south end of the plan. That's proposed to be um retained. There's a significant hedgerow along the sort of southwest. Boundary, you'll see that that's sort of a green stripe there. Um what we've done is through the application, we've um amended the zoning, so the rear of those lots will be. A split zone where the last um. I believe it's five or ten meters is zoned open space so that no one can. Uh put in a pool or a shed and that hedgerow is all going to be uh retained, but also new plantings added. Um similarly, there's a hedgerow at the edge of the school property between the school and the subdivision. Uh part of the location of that multiple block there is because within a multiple block, you have a lot of flexibility to do things like retain. Hedgerows and trees, because it can just be a common element within that. Um multiple blocks, so we fully intend on preserving that hedgerow. It's sort of on the boundary of the school and our property. And at one point, we had the park up against the school, but actually because of the hedgerow. Flipped it the other way because it's um. Can be a bit of a issue when you have a public park and you've got a really dense hedgerow of. People kind of loitering in there and and not having a lot of visibility. Uh and then likewise, the hedgerow at the edge of what I'm calling the north swim block. Um all best efforts to retain that feature as well, so. This is all um set out in draft approval conditions where we have to do more detailed tree management plans, but. It is our intent to um preserve as much of these features and mature trees as possible. And then this is just really showing kind of all of the open space blocks um between the stormwater management, the. Park that's associated with the school, the proposed park, um and the hedgerows and trail connections. Uh in terms of the road network uh and how it's been designed, so. As everyone's I I think aware, there are multiple connections out to the existing community. Um we have a road connection at the north to concession. And then there's uh four connections that are sort of to the east, and having a number of road connections like this. Actually disperses traffic a lot more evenly. If you were to remove one or two accesses. You would find the volume on the remaining streets would be exponentially increased, and that's where you find people start doing. Cut throughs to try to get away from that type of congestion. Um there was a much earlier version of this plan, and if you can see where my mouse is pointing, where it was a straight from concession. All the way down to Weston with pretty much no breaks. And our concern with that um initial plan was that that was going to become a complete speedway, and people were going to use it as a shortcut. And everyone would cut down to the south to come out to Weston, so. We've really tried to break up the road network so that. If you're in the north end of the subdivision, it really doesn't make sense to come down to Weston Drive because it's not a direct. Traffic route, you really have to kind of circumvent. Uh and I wanted to also mention, I know there's a lot of concern about. Unit numbers and density and the fact that there is such a wide range in unit numbers. The main reason for that range is in these uh high density and medium density blocks, because the official plan sets out. A minimum density and a maximum, and we've really just applied. Those official plan minimums and maximums. And depending on how those blocks develop, it could be a huge range. If someone wants to do, say, a block of townhouses, that's going to have. Significantly less units than if someone divide develops this with apartment buildings and has underground parking, so. We've done some nat- math and numbers and. Uh what I can confirm is about seventy percent of the density in this subdivision is north of Esseltime Drive. So um I heard the comment about how much of the public comments get considered. Um we and remember, say we, MHPC, when we we do a lot of subdivision planning, and one of the things we always look at. Before we even submit an application is what's in the surrounding area, what are the surrounding uses, and. It was pretty clear to us right away that with this being a low density neighborhood. We wanted to make sure we were weighting our density more to the north, so that the density decreases as you get south. And that you're not directing the majority of traffic down to the south. Um similarly. Um with the existing single detached that we're going to be backing on to. We wanted to ensure that we're proposing single detached along the same route, which is the intent. Um we've, as Eric mentioned, we've increased the minimum lot size along this block. So the zoning would normally allow a minimum of ten point five meters. We've um proposed twelve point two. As the minimum lot frontage. And then we looked at the um site-specific zoning of what's beside us, and there are a number of things. There are a number of things in it that we thought would probably not be um wanting to carry forward by the residents and that's. Decreased rear yard setbacks and decreased lot depth, so we have not carried those. Um reduced lot depths and lot um rear yard setbacks into our proposal, we have to meet the minimum. Lot depth and the minimum rear yard setback, so those are some of the things that um when we were laying out the subdivision, we we really did with the mindset of. We want to ensure that, you know, traffic is really going to concession, Quarterline and out to Baldwin Street and really trying to avoid traffic movements. On those local streets. And our uh our traffic engineer is on the virtual call, so if there's really detailed traffic questions, I would ask that you ask them, because um I'm not a traffic engineer. Um and then just to mention that um this subdivision will be built in phases. With a number of different registrations, so we anticipate that conservatively, it's probably ten to fifteen years. At least before this entire thing would ever be built out. Um and the intent is that we would register from the north end. South, so the um this area at the south can't go in until the sw- swim block is um. Provided and it just makes sense from a staging perspective that we start at the north end, so. I did want to just assure everyone here today that this isn't, this approval doesn't mean all of this is built in one registration, the um. The town and the county doesn't allow that to happen, even if we wanted it to, it will be a series of um registrations before it's all built out. And I've already talked about this, this is just talking about um how we're planning singles beside singles, how we've increased the minimum lot. Frontage and we've proposed to keep the lot depths and rear yard setbacks um as the parent bylaw would require. And this is the uh subdivision that's before you this evening and I just wanted to point out two, couple of the changes from what was initially submitted, so. I mentioned earlier that there was um originally two smaller parks proposed, one sort of at the north end. One at the south end and we were proposing a a part land, part cash and loop. Through comments received through circulation, we've now centralized and done one large park and the parkland size has increased from about. One point three hectares to two point oh seven three hectares, so we've got greater amounts of parkland in this version. The open space block at the south has also. Uh been enlarged to include the entire ravine feature and to include additional areas for compensation planning. So that open space block at the south increased from about one point four hectares to one point seven seven six. Uh and as I previously mentioned, we've now applied split zoning along the lots that back onto the hedgerow so that it makes it easier to retain that feature. Uh the number of driveways, our earlier version, we had lots on both sides of Esseltime, so there would have been a significantly num- bigger number of driveways. We've reduced the number of driveways um by putting the park along Esseltime and um the medium-density block, which would likely only have one entrance. Uh and then a number of walkway blocks connecting this park down to the south uh will be required and that will be dealt with through detailed design. And where requested by engineering staff, the road right-ofways have been increased and that's predominantly at Grandview. The street in from concession, um the portion that goes out uh from Weston. And uh Durham Drive, I think, was already at that uh road width. So that is um my presentation, I'm happy to respond to any questions again. Um the project engineers are also here, so if there's servicing-related questions, I'll maybe have them come up, uh but otherwise, happy to respond to any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Seeing councillor Parker then councillor Spencer.
Through you, Mayor Gilvazy. Um first off, thanks for your presentation tonight. Um the first question that I have is. You said that public consultation has been part of uh part of building this uh this development. Um did you guys have the opportunity to meet with the Baldwin Place residents and if so, um was there any um? Any ideas brought forward from them that you've incorporated into this uh this development?
So we haven't uh had a meeting, this has been the first public meeting that's been scheduled. Um as I mentioned, there's a number of things that we looked at even before submitting, such as making sure we're having a consistent. Zone, um having larger frontages, but some of the things included, um like I said, on Esseltime Road, we used to have a previous design where there was going to be a lot more. Um traffic coming out, I believe we actually had Esseltime extending right to the western property, so we tried to make that a have more of a local street function. Um having, again, keeping the density sort of north of Esseltime Road. Uh and making sure that we're not doing things like reducing setbacks against uh existing developments, so. Uh in terms of some of the specific things that we've heard through Baldwin Place. Such as removing the road connections from, you know, a traffic perspective, a safety and an emergency services perspective. Um it was the advice of um the county, the town planning and also our en- our. Uh traffic consultants that that would have a negative impact if we were to remove those road connections, so it is something we've. Looked at and talked about after seeing those um comments and the um the response was that it was going to be creating a larger issue if we did. Didn't have those road connections and it's also um they're designated right in the county's official plan and were always intended to be extended along with their services.
Okay, follow-up. Um so essentially, um this, the neighborhood that you're impacting, my personal opinion is that. When you're developing a neighborhood, you shouldn't have a major impact on existing neighborhoods. You should take into consideration what the people that have already been there and live in, um. How you're going to affect them. This this development has. A large impact on residents that already live there. Um to me, there should have been public consultation between you and. The Residents Association that has put a ton of work into coming up with ideas to. Alleviate some of their concerns so that it has minimal impact on their development and to me, that wasn't done and. Part of being a good neighbor is communicating and with dev- with developing behind. With developing right behind them, that should have been where the starting point was. What can we do to minimize the impact on your community that you've already lived here or that we've already lived here? And that's one of the the major things that I have, so I. I understand that you guys would be doing everything from the planning perspective, but at the same time, there's people's lives that are directly impacted by doing this, so. Um I I did, I will go back to one other question that I have, um and that's in regards to Grandview Drive. Um I didn't ness- I didn't, I may have missed it on the map, is Grandview Drive in your. Plan to be extended out to connect with, say, street, I believe it's street F, is that in the plan?
It's uh, I'll just go back to the plan. So this is the Grandview Drive extension, so it connects to Street A.
A.
From concession and then it's um it does connect to Street F as well.
Okay, um and just to follow up in regards to Street F, I s- know that you said in an original plan, you had it as a straight-through road. And it was changed um by suggestion. Um what is the benefit to the development of having Street F? Meander the way that it does versus being straight and adding in stop signs per se. Um because I would think for emergency services and moving through, that having a straight road is a lot easier to to navigate than. Driving a fire truck uh down a winding road.
Well, it comes down to um a number of things. In terms of emergency ac- service access. There's multiple road points that a- access can be granted. Um having this as a straight through, even for residents within this future development, it's having that become sort of a speedway and we've all. Been in those neighborhoods that have those one long straight road and everyone just speeds through them no matter what kind of traffic coming you put in, so. It was really intended to kind of slow things down and also, as I mentioned previously, with having. The density weighted to the north, our concern was if there was just this straight connection, then people at the north would use that. To avoid going out to Quarterline and and some of the other existing roads, so. Um we were trying to actually uh make it for a slowed-down sort of version of traffic as opposed to having easy shortcut routes.
Just one follow-up to that, um. By doing that or by not doing that on Street F, but essentially you're extending Esseltime and you're extending Weston, are you not creating that same situation in? The existing neighborhood by doing that?
Thank you.
First, please, just let, just let the planner answer.
Thank you. Um as I mentioned before, because of all these accesses, traffic is dispersed, so if you're. At this south end where it's the lower density, absolutely those residents are going to likely come out to Weston Drive. If this was a straight shot here, then I think there's a greater opportunity that. A significantly higher number of people are going to cut down to this street, same with Esseltime, if this was straight through. Um with uh lots of lots here, but Durham Drive is going to be the easier connection to get over to Quartertown. Uh Quarterline, especially because of all the driveways in Baldwin Place, that au- automatically makes this sort of the less direct route. Uh again, our traffic consultants are on and might be able to better respond to these, but um there is. In our, uh when we looked at this previously, there were bigger traffic concerns when we had that full north-south connection.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um just to piggyback before I go to councillor Spencer, just to piggyback on that. Um so there's another development in town and I get multiple traffic complaints and I go there often and we have. We have um a camera on that um particular road and it often shows that people aren't speeding and this is the interesting thing. The average speed was actually thirty-seven K, the problem is the volume. And it's the volume and we're experiencing that everywhere in town with the. Amount of growth that we had, I mean, I think we've got close to two thousand housing units here before this council this evening. Um and the problem becomes, it's not necessarily that they're speeding, yes, people standing on their porch may think that people are speeding, but actually our speed cameras show that they're not. But it is the sheer volume. Um traffic reports are great, but they also may s- make assumptions. Right, there is, they're, they're making predictions as to what the potential homeowner is going to do, right? They're not, it's not black and white.
Yeah.
Right, because if I lived, you know, in that area and and I was heading to Zares, which is the other end of town and. Would probably go through Baldwin Place, because that's the shortest route. People are all about the shortest route, not necessarily the smartest route. Or the safest route, the shortest route. Because we live in a society where people are in a hurry, so councillor Spencer?
Thank you through the mayor uh to eh to yourself. Um when looking at the map, like. Uh you can see the houses and whatnot and it looks like five houses down Durham will be extended out. Uh to this community, um and so it would make sense that like if it's just five houses down, that Esseltime wouldn't be used. Given the amount of um, you know. Lack of wanting it from that community, so I'm just curious why uh it was felt that both, both of those were re- wanted or required.
Um well, in part, there's services in both that need to be extended, so there was always, when this was designed, it was designed with the intent and. That's why there was a road stub left there was because it was designed to extend and to have the services extend, so. Um you know, a- a- again, we talked about this with um county staff in terms of. What it would look like to remove those accesses and the concern was that it's going to cause. Increases in volume everywhere else and it could create bigger issues as a result. Um having multiple accesses. Really does help disperse that traffic more evenly so that you're not having it all hung out on one or two spots. Same with Durham Drive, the services are right there to the end, it was always intended that that road would uh extend, that's why it's shown in your official plan.
Uh if I can continue, um so. But given like the safety, like you're talking about extra volume, but given the safety of this community, being an adult community. Um as well as um the concerns from the community. Um I just question why that would be felt necessarily, but I'll I'll let that go. My other question is. In regards to um the green space of uh land use, um you've mentioned a few and I I can't seem to find it in. Our oodles of pages, what is planned for across uh like between the two communities, between the existing. Baldwin and the new uh Victoria?
So are you talking along here?
Yes.
So these uh units all back on right now, so it's a rear, the rear lots are budding to our neighborhood, so. This is intended to be single-detached, so we're not proposing any uh townhomes, it would be single-detached. And they would likewise um back on with, so it'd be a rear yard to rear yard condition and uh as I mentioned. The zoning of these lots adjacent to us have lesser um rear yard setbacks and shallower lot depths permitted. We have not proposed to carry that forward, so there would still be the regular rear yard setback, so um nothing within at least seven point five meters and. The same typical minimum lot depth of thirty meters that the zoning would uh permit, so it's the same R two zone, but we haven't carried forward. Um some of the other specifics that we've seen elsewhere, which would allow for tighter, shallower lots up against those, but it would be single-detached.
And if I could, any existing trees there, what was the plan?
Um I don't believe there's, there's not a mature hedgerow like you see elsewhere, but we do have to do um as part of the. Uh back plan conditions, there's a full-on tree management, tree preservation plan required, so once we get into that detailed design. We'll be looking at um anywhere if there's uh trees that are along this that where we can try to preserve them.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you.
Um maybe just to follow through with that, is there um um fence planned? Like a wood fence, I'm not talking chain link fence, I'm talking wood fence, is there a a plan for a cohesive, like looks the same all across wood fence?
Uh it's a good con- question, I'm not sure if it's typically required, I know we usually have to have. Um chain link where you're adjacent to, say, natural features, but. It's uh something we can take back and and talk to planning staff about as a as a possible. Um I don't believe typically you do um. Fence between residential to residential, but it is something we can look at.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillor Luciani?
Through mayor, um. It just uh just in turn, in terms of the uh the entire development here, I mean. Obviously, uh we're we're trying to do everything we can to uh to mitigate any of the concerns that that it's going to have in Baldwin Place, I mean, we we realize that Baldwin Place. As it exists and how, as it's been there, has been a great draw to the town, has brought great people to town and. Obviously, we want to do whatever we can within reason to make, uh you know, whatever we can do to mitigate, to keep everybody happy. My question is um you, a couple, um one, the medium-density forty-five to eighty-eight units between Durham and Esseltime. Is that intended to uh, you you indicate there's likely to be one entrance in and out? Is that in intended to uh disperse out out onto Esseltime or onto Del- uh Durham?
Um so as uh Eric mentioned, this would have to go through a future site plan phase. I would anticipate that there may be an entrance on each, however, we've done um multiple blocks like this before where. The second entrance is more of um emergency only, so it can be kind of chained off unless it's. Needed and that's certainly something through site plan we could look at so that you really only have the Durham Drive access. I just think for emergency services or fire, you might have to have a a second, but we have done them before where it's. Sort of only used in emergency purposes and that might be one good solution to kind of, again. Then we're down to sort of single-detached and just the park frontage and and a really minimal number of driveways on Esseltime.
Uh if may may continue, the um. I I realized the initial plan had a straight. A straight road leading right on through and connecting to Weston, and I do like the way that it's broken up and 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 I do agree with you, I think it will disperse traffic. A lot better uh this way and you're definitely not going to have that cut through, that's providing that there is an access on on Weston. So my next question is, if that access isn't there, how does it affect the subdivision and how does it affect servicing going forward? And conversely, uh with Esseltime Drive, same uh same question.
So in terms of Weston, I'll I'll probably maybe have Andrew speak to the servicing part of it, but. Um our biggest concern with, besides the fact that there was um the intent is that. Services still need to come through here, but if this Weston is eliminated, then for emergency response, you've got. All of this uh development on the south end and a really long distance to go before you get to an access road, so. From emergency services perspective, um I think there would be a significant concern there. Uh and then in terms of Esseltime, similarly, the road's been designed to go through, the services are there, so regardless, the services have to come through. Uh and it just, you know, it it doesn't really make sense to just have this broad servicing corridor when it was always intended, but. Um what was the official plan would have done is had Esseltime come all the way to the western boundary, so if. Lands further to the west ever come in, they would all use that and we did eliminate that road stub because we really felt Durham Drive. Made more sense to be, if those lands ever come in in the future, we didn't want to have all that additional land coming to Esseltime, so we have tried to. Notwithstanding the designation of it as a collector, treat it more like a local road and and that's really been informed in large part by. How it developed in Baldwin Place with a bunch of single-detached and individual driveways coming out.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Rosar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to the speaker. So you're starting on the north side to build, is what you're, is that what you're telling us?
So it'll have to be registered in a multitude of phases and the intent is that we would start registration to the north and this with the south being sort of the last phases phases to register.
And what year do you think you'll get to the south end?
Uh well, I give a estimate of, I think if we're being aggressive, it might be ten years. I I think realistically, it's probably more to ten to fifteen before you would ever see this fully get built out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Some point of order, please. We're still in a planning meeting. Thank you. Counselor Luciani.
If I may, just one uh one additional question. Has there been any consideration given to uh I from emergency uh services uh side of it, I mean, I would hate to see one street trapping people into a subdivision and the way it's sitting. So I'm personally and I and I may not be a popular decision or a popular point tonight, I do think that the connection on the south end needs to be there, but at the other point, we talk about traffic mitigation, we talk about if we put a straight street in and doing traffic mitigation. Have you thought about traffic mitigation if it was to be connected down there, number one? And number two, is there a way possibly that it could even be a a one-way-in type thing? Or um even bollards or something that are are able to be uh up and down or I'm just throwing different uh different ideas out. Thank you.
Um it hasn't been. I mean, part of why we do traffic studies is for them to identify sort of where there may be issues and if there's intended, um the thought is there's major issues, then they recommend different type of traffic calming measures. Typically, something like this, um you you as as it was mentioned tonight, traffic engineers make their best case suggestions are usually conservative in terms of they plan for the worst-case scenario, but in terms of if traffic calming is needed, it's usually more determined after full built-out, once things are happening. Um I don't know that um you know, engineering staff would support sort of a a write-in or a one-way only. Um I just, you know, our our the response to the application was we needed to make that connection wider, so um and we originally didn't have this connection and it was you need to bring it all the way to the west end, so um there is conflicting and we we understand the concerns of of the neighborhood, but we've also got um sort of the desire of of public works and engineering of saying we need to have these road connections and and the traffic engineer saying the same thing. So um it is a challenge. Um and we I we've tried to minimize, as I said, by not having Esseltine go right to the road. I think um there are some things we can do with that multiple block that would help and um and again, by just weighting the density the way we have, we've really tried to make it so that the majority of traffic is going to be going sort of concession and quarter line.
Anyone else? Th- this is the final call for questions. Go ahead.
Um just in regards to Counselor Luciani's question, um when we're looking at that south end, there's no way to create a exit out to Lowry without being in this commu- or not, yeah, Lowry, without it being in this community. Um
You'll have to remind me where Lowry is. Is that further down this way?
Am I right with that? Yeah, yeah, it's Pressey and then it turns into Lowry, which is outside of this community out to there.
So is it down here somewhere?
At the south end, yeah.
So we we've got a significant natural feature here, so putting a road through that open space block would be, I would say, not supported by um Conservation Authority or um county staff. Is there a significant uh natural feature there?
Okay, and then my second-
Further road connection here, uh if that was to ever extend Weston, that's outside of our our control. I don't know if there are future plans for that road to extend. Certainly, if it did, um that would provide another way out, but that's again outside of the the limits of the draft plan, so we don't have any control over external road extensions.
Okay. Um and in regards to if there wasn't an exit at that end, um has there been a study done to know like what the time we're talking about, like if, let's say, emergency vehicles needed to come up Durham to get to that section, uh what the difference of time that would be?
Uh no, we haven't done, um a- all I can say is we didn't receive any comments from emergency services through the formal um application process, but we haven't looked at what the difference would be. We did when we um saw the comments came through, asked our traffic consultants to look at and consider and and what they're said, uh what they said is consistent with what I'm saying is that removing that would mean that other traffic elsewhere would increase significantly and um for example, if you removed this but kept Esseltine, then more people are going to take this and potentially cut through the subdivision, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh next, there is an opportunity for anyone in attendance to speak in opposition to the application. So I would invite you to um come to the podium. Have to uh sign this, sign the paper and state your name. So if there's more than one of you, I would suggest lining up over on the side by Amelia's desk there, or C. Laurel with her. Thank you, Laurel. Sir, uh uh would you like to speak? You can just stay there and we'll get you in the queue if it's more comfortable. Because there's not, you're, okay, it's up to you. I just want to make sure that there's enough room there. Okay, are we above capacity at this? Absolutely. So just a re- a reminder that um everyone, please remain quiet so that the um anyone opposing this has obviously um do recourse to bring their concerns forward, so welcome.
Mayor Gilbosi. So for Telford Council, our guests, thank you for this opportunity to bring our concerns to you regarding the proposed adjacent to our community. President of Baldwin Place Residents Association Board of Directors and vice chair of the Baldwin Place Telford West Committee. I should hold Baldwin Place consists of two hundred and eighty-two homes. These are the the, bring up the screen now, the members of our Board of Directors and the committee involved in bringing this presentation together. I am joined tonight by over ninety-five residents of our community and petition signed over two hundred and seventy residents to support our position. I provided the clerk with packages in order to provide you with more detail regarding our concerns and impact the growth of development we'll have in our community that is allowed to proceed as currently proposed by the developer. Let me assure you, we are not against development as such. Our purpose is to maintain the safety, security and integrity of Baldwin Place and residents. I would like to draw your attention to some of our key concerns. Victoria Wood's only traffic forecast estimates over twenty-three hundred additional vehicles daily that travel through our community with five of our residents. This is contrary to Oxford County's official plan, section two. Housing Development in Residential Areas states traffic pattern from development is to be designed to create minimal impact on local streets. There was a traffic impact study done February ninth, twenty-twenty-three, and that stated, and I'll quote, most my most review, we confirm that the findings and conclusions of the twenty-two traffic impact study are valid for the updated draft plan. Victoria Wood's traffic forecast estimates slightly more daily vehicle traffic through our community than this forecast to travel along Concession Street, Major County Road. We would ask that the roadway at the southern end of the development, Western Drive, be situated so there is no access into Baldwin Place. We would ask Esseltine Drive to remain closed. Under the closed Victoria Wood Plan, there will be six arterial roads connecting to Quarter Town Line in a space of four hundred and sixty-five meters. At present, the east end of Ass- Esseltine is used by parents to park while dropping off and picking up their children from nearby West Westfield Public School. The current proposed plan will turn Esseltine into half a kilometer of one of the few straight roads in Telford, a potential noiseway adjacent to proposed park. Our senior citizens, community and children to the capital area. Although we are aware, the roads throughout Baldwin Place are designed to accept higher traffic volumes. Our community is not. We ask council to approve the establishment of a green belt, oops, sorry, that. Along the western boundary of Baldwin Place from Esseltine to June Ferry, this would also stop removal of existing tree line. We would ask council to ensure the design of the drainage system within the development does not flow into Baldwin Place's existing soils. We would ask council's assurance that Victoria Wood's plans comply with Oxford County's plan regarding those lots adjacent to our community. Victoria Wood has requested R-two-dash-three-five zoning in those blocks backing onto Baldwin Place. The zoning units detached, dwellings semi-detached and duplexes. The Oxford County official plan, eight-point-three housing development in residential areas require new residential lots with direct exposure to established residential street to be consistent with the established building pattern. This would require lots to maintain setbacks and spacing between buildings to be consistent with the established building pattern. We ask that all new housing backing onto Baldwin Place meets standards of existing Baldwin Place properties. Single detached dwellings, R-two-dash-five, R-two-dash-five H, single story, maximum height of seven point six meters. The current high-density housing proposed will have a detrimental impact on the community's identity, safety and security. The added strain on our community services and medical, fire and leasing is obvious. Many of our new residents are having difficulty getting a family doctor. Ensure minimal disruption to our community from oils, dust and dirt will require assurance from the developer that during construction, temporary access for construction vehicles not be permitted on any street within Baldwin Place. We would ask that the placement of site storage, staging areas and temporary facilities be located on the west side of the development and or north of Esseltine Drive. Mayor and counselors, the More Homes Built Faster Act of twenty-twenty-two has silenced our voice as a concerned community group. We now turn to you, our elected council, to speak on our behalf. We must rely on you to ensure the safety, security and integrity of Baldwin Place is maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council to the presenter? Counselor Parsons and then Counselor um.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wild, for your presentation. Uh your last slide uh hits us on the head. The More Homes Built for Faster Act is going to handcuff this municipality, the county of Oxford. You referenced the county planning. Uh things are changing, they're going to change a lot more, I think, before these homes are built. And it's going to make it uh very difficult for a municipality to put uh plans in place um to limit the growth. In a few minutes, I'm sure you're going to hear from a number of members of council, myself included, that are going to pose many elements of this of this report. I don't know how well that will go because the planner, the developer rather, can just basically take this and do what they want. So I appreciate your your presentation was excellent. I I feel um compassionate uh to the residents of Baldwin Place, but the things are changing under the homes built for for uh uh the more homes built faster act, so I think we do have to look at uh traffic and safety and things of that matter, and that's where I'll be speaking to in a few minutes. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Parker?
Through you, Mayor Gilbasi, to uh Mr. Wild. First off, thank you for your presentation and the time and effort that you and your residents association have put into uh putting together um ideas and concern your concerns. Uh the one question I did have was in regards to emergency services and your request for um the closure of Esseltine and Weston. Um do you guys, in your research, did you guys come forward with any ideas that would help to mitigate the concerns that uh may be brought forward with slower response times due to limited entrances into that uh neighborhood?
Fortunately, Counselor Parker, we're not traffic engineers, so we're kind of amateurs trying to do as much of professional job as we can. Emergency services come in from the north, the fire department is at uh at concession and and Telford. Uh the hospital is at Walton and concession. So I would think if there was anything coming in from there, it would be faster to come in from the north than to go down to the south and come in through through our community. Um apart from that, I don't have a response, so thank you.
Thank you for your answer.
Um thank you very much. Um number one, um I read, you know, I read through your proposal and have received many emails from your community. Uh number one, I think it's great that people are engaged. Um Counselor Parsons did speak to something. Um we are mandated by the province to get shovels in the ground. And and that is the reality that we face, but that does not mean that we can't look at factors like um you know, safety and and disruptions to neighboring hood community or neighboring communities, but um I would encourage the enthusiasm that you shared with this council to share with your upper tiers of government. Because the More Homes Built Faster Act, this is just the beginning of it. Thank you. Next. Welcome. Then what's your name?
Bear with me, I'm not a professional speaker, so. I am Michael Zabres, twenty-nine Hograss Drive, Baldwin Place. And I'm addressing this to Mayor Waverson, our council and guests. I have a mobility problem. I'm eighty-eight years old, fighting to stay home out of lung pain care. In my area of Baldwin Place, I am not the minority, I am the majority. That is why I chose Baldwin Place. Birds of a feather locked together. I won't use outside communication. I rely on old-fashioned mail method. To get the mailbox close to my home. To get the mailbox close to my home, I must cross two streets or walk on the street. Walking on the street is a shallow distance. Walking on the street is a metaphor. Allowing increased traffic of any kind in Baldwin Place community would cause a safety hazard for my south. I can't speak for other residents. Using Baldwin Place streets for access of new development is a rant, not a mood. If scenes long people are always in the way, please do not use Baldwin Place streets to save a few minutes' time for others. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Okay.
Thank you very much, Michael. Does, uh, any, do any council members have any questions? No, seeing none, we're next in line. We can step up to the podium. Thank you very much.
Oh, boy. Gentlemen, you gotta like that.
Your worship, Mayor Galvacy, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns about the proposed development adjacent to our community at Baldwin Place. My name is Maureen Flynn. I live at one hundred Weston Drive in Tilsenberg. I am very concerned about the traffic that this development has been proposed perhaps on our community, and I'm also very concerned about the quality of life that will be forever changed with this proposal. I would like first to address the traffic. This proposal takes a dead-end street and a cul-de-sac and makes a major town road with a median of one thousand five hundred and fifty cars per day. It will change Weston Drive from the quiet extension of Veterans Memorial Walkway. It does go to the very end of Weston Drive and into the creek to a high-traffic roadway. It will, when we bought our property, we knew and we expected that there would be development in the corn and bean field across from our home. We didn't need, however, expect that our street would host the traffic from that development. In its revised proposal, the developer has actually increased nine units in the number of homes to be developed and decreased the traffic. Now, everybody here at Baldwin Place knows I'm really bad at this. But I know if you increase the number of units, you're going to decrease the traffic. It just doesn't make sense. Here are the numbers of vehicles the developer had given us in the first proposal with fewer homes. Through Baldwin Place, there would be two thousand three hundred and thirty vehicles per day. Breaking down that further, eight hundred, sorry, seven hundred and eighty cars a day will travel on Esseltime. That leaves a whopping one thousand five hundred and fifty cars on that little stretch of Weston Road with Baldwin Street. Let me paint the picture for you. Today, there are eight houses on that little stretch of Weston Drive. And there are seven houses on Jean Ferry. That means there are about twenty cars that use that road today, including friends, visitors, and whatever. That's a nine thousand five hundred and fifty. Now let's add to that the thirty homes on Ferris Crescent that often enter onto Baldwin Place. And the twenty-eight homes that are already in Baldwin Place that use that stretch to get to Quarter Town and downtown, wherever they're going. The impact is far greater than the Oxford Plan in traffic in section eight point two that says traffic impacts should create minimal disturbance to local streets. Like, really? There is no current road connecting the proposed new development to Baldwin Place on Weston Drive right now. It's a road. It has sidewalks on both sides. There is no opening. It is just a road. And in, for many of us, it's just an extension of our Veterans Memorial Parkway. We have a low lifestyle committing. This amount of traffic can help negatively affect our lifestyle. I can hardly imagine getting out of Baldwin Place in an early morning appointment, appointment with fifteen hundred cars or seven hundred and fifty cars ahead of me waiting to turn while they get to work. Now, I come to you with alternatives. I'm not coming to complain. I have solutions. I do believe there are very valid concerns about accessing emergency vehicles to our development at the south end. And I believe that an emergency access similar to the one that is part of the town line of the common avenue, which is a kind of a one-vehicle runway route that the emergency people use, will not impact our community, but would also provide that access. I also suggest that if you extend Road F to Lowry Line, which runs parallel to the south end of this development, there's a little farmer's field and then a really loud music playing road. It already is ready for traffic. That that could eliminate the traffic issue at the south end of Baldwin. So I come to you with concern and I come to you with a suggestion. The second issue I am concerned with in the development plan as it's revised is the lack of green space. One big park is a great idea. If you have all those people accessing the little parquetts at Baldwin Place at the corner of Weston Drive and Baldwin isn't really going to be the answer. That's the place where people who walk from town along to the end of the walkway, the Memorial Veterans Memorial Parkway, stop at the bench, visit, have a little rest and carry on. It's not really a park. It's a parquet. And further to that, Baldwin Place, we change that. The town releases it to us and we change it. So I hardly can think that the town's going to sell that to a developer to call it their green space when it isn't in the development, like, that's kind of crazy to me. The end of the, the Veterans Memorial Park, as I said, is the southern end of the trail is at the end of Weston Drive. And there's a wee little wooden walkway. If you've ever walked it particularly in the fall, it's actually quite magical. There's a ravine in a little creek. And I know this won't happen when the development happens, but right now I see deer along that little parkway. And I know that the wooden animals are there. I can hope I think that will be impacted on this trail, on this development. People, not only for Baldwin Place and Hickory Hills, but also to walk that Veterans Memorial Parkway. And we have to tell you, they don't want us on. They probably should. But they walk down a really quiet Weston Road and venture into the forest area. And I believe the new neighbors that we will be having will enjoy that walk too. And I believe they will walk into town the way we walk into town. And that will be part of what our own Tilsenberg Trails Master Plan promoted when it talked about building better health, stronger communities, and protecting mature areas. A road that accommodates fifteen car cars a day, protect the woodlands at the end of that parkway, and it will certainly build a greener community. The families of the new development will need parks and swing sets and places for picnics, and we know that it's the job of the developer to put those in. We need our green spaces, and you know what? Covid taught us that. The green belt we need in Baldwin Place could be a green belt extending from Esseltime to Jean Ferry. It would define our community within Tilsenberg and at the Weston Road and define the boundary of the Veterans Memorial Parkway. It would also be in keeping with the Tilsenberg Trails Master Plan, which advocates whenever possible, there'll be at least a one liter vegetation buffer for snow removal along its trail. I am worried that the town of Tilsenberg might not have enough sports fields, arenas, space, public parks, pools, parks to support all its development. I'm worried that there are not schools, public and Catholic, for children to walk to. And I'm worried that in five years, people will ask who in town council permitted fifteen hundred cars on a residential street? Traffic lifestyle. I worry about that. I know you do too. Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments from council?
Sorry, stepping back.
Seeing, seeing them. Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there anyone else? There's still lineup down the hallway.
Hi, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Members of council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Um, before, it is.
She, sorry, just state your name.
Sorry, yeah, uh, I have a question. I live at thirty-eight Esseltime Drive in Tilsenberg. And I was wondering if we can put the, uh, development map up again, if that's possible. Well, it's, it's not overly critical. I thought it's just, I'm, I'm not a techie. I thought you just flick a switch and you go from this to the other. Obviously not. Um, with respect to Esseltime, the developer suggested there was an internal road that ran from one end to the other. And you said, well, she said, well, that was, uh, conducive to a racetrack kind of environment. Now, if you look at Esseltime, it is a straight road from Quarter Town Line to almost three quarters through the development. And if you measure it, it probably almost measures the length of the road inside the development. Uh, just a point. Um, the other point I was going to make is when I listened to a planner about water and sewer, now I wasn't quite sure what the answer was, and I'm not sure if the county is responsible for water supply and sewer, or if Tilsenberg is responsible for the water supply and distribution, and the county is responsible for the sewer.
Water and sewer is the county.
Yes, the county. Well, the reason, um, okay, with respect to bill twenty-three, there is a section in the Planning Act which both of us who did not own it. And that section allows, uh, town councils and councils and, uh, of course, um, townships and regions to turn around development if the, um, services that are required cannot be provided, which includes incidentally schools. It's been a longstanding issue, but I haven't seen the council yet turn it down because it wasn't in these schools. I'm disappointed. It was a school response, but hey, they can say whatever they want. Um, so maybe I, I forgot. I should have looked it up, but I forgot what the section was. But in the actual planning act and, and section two, uh, which doesn't eliminate that section from the planning act. In other words, if you were a township, can, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, the county has a problem with water supply or sewer supply, um, then the county can turn the development down based until such time that the water supply into sewer is actually up to snuff and can support the development. And as Madam Mayor pointed out, this isn't the only development. We have two other ones online. We're looking at two, three thousand people. Um, the other part that was a little bit of a concern to me is I heard discussion about emergency services, et cetera, et cetera. The standard process, and I'm not sure how it works in Tilsenberg Council, but the standard process is if you get in a development application, the development application is, uh, circulated to the fire department, emergency services, ERS, uh, community services, engineering, and, you know, the whole gamut. And they will come back and look at it, and they will say, yes, it's okay. No, it's not okay. Uh, fire department will say, well, we're already having a problem with water pressure. Uh, adding another fifty fire hiders to the system is likely not going to be appropriate. Yeah, I'm just saying. When you look at the entire development process of developments that are coming before council, the, the community service department should respond and say, well, in five time, in five years, the ice time is no longer adequate. The indoor pool is no large enough, the water pool capacity will be exhausted. The trucks will no longer be sufficient. Our recreational activities seem to be bumped up. So looking at your cost estimate, the logical question would be, well, that's fine. How much does that go to cost? If you add another twenty miles of road to the system, well, we need another snow pile. Um, once we pile up snow, we're willing to put it. I would like engineering, so, or, or, or the engineering department's assessment of how, when you look at the internal road network, where we're willing to put the snow. We've got a major snowstorm. Maybe we can go around in circles. Because there's nowhere to go. I went and dumped it into a, uh, sponsor, uh, uh, collection, as I see. You know, overall, yes, you know, the weather blow. Um, but Tilsenberg is the kind of town, I figure out, you can't get there from here. And what that means is anybody on the west side, there are two roads. That's, that's Baldwin and that is concession. There's nothing on this end. You're adding two thousand people roughly to the take. There's no employment land. There's no employment. There's no work, trapping, everything. Government services, golfing shopping, restaurants, fast food, probably those unemployed services people need is over there, and there are two roads of this area here. That's concession and this bolt. That development is actually technically in totally in the wrong place. Now, you can fix that. Of course, beyond us to fix it, but you could fix it. If you make that road at the very top end of the, uh, of the development and run it all the way to three, that means all the traffic can go that road that can feed into concession on this side, feed into three on the other side. So we need to get to the employment lands that Tilsenberg has right now. And, uh, the, uh, of course, internally, the collector wrote, uh, according to timeline, will automatically disperse to, uh, to, uh, Baldwin or to concession. Like, you don't have to open up Esseltime to get there. Like, Esseltime is sort of an add-on, if you ask me. But this was made, you want to remind me, the way it was presented, it doesn't solve any problems that the town faces. None, zero. It creates a massive traffic problem. You go down to, uh, um, concession when that development is built, you need delayed dreams hitting Broadway. The same on, the same on Baldwin. Baldwin is basically a residential street. Never designed. Now you go to a golf course development, you dump all that traffic onto Baldwin. Think about it. What's happening here? There's nothing here. So I would say run a road at the top end, run it on three on one, run it on concession on the other. Because not all the people are working in Tilsenberg. They work in, they work in Woodstock. They might take County Road. Or they come down concession and then hop into, uh, Quarter Town Line on the routine. Or straight out concession to Woodstock. Or straight out concession to Woodstock. There it. What I'm saying is you're creating an internal problem in the town that this development will make. If that development would be over on this side, you get lots of options, lots of roads, lots of options. But doing where it is, you're clogging it. Granted, we can't remove it, but you can make internal changes or external changes to the road network overall that will help, not just Esseltine or or whatever. It'll help the overall traffic to disperse. Right? Plus, in the end, they're going to add on anyway. That will be the next expansion for, uh, for, uh, employment lands, industrial. Right? Because if you look at industrial one day and they're running it, they're running the streets up already. I mean, they they tried to appease us and say, well, we stop running Esseltine as a dead end to to an awesome development. Well, nice. But you know what's going to come. And if you want industrial land, because you're either of it, that's when you own it. And then you got the road network. And if you save the cost between the developer, maybe a little bit by the time, maybe a little bit by, uh, Canada. Then that takes a whole bunch of traffic off the internal roads that exist in Tilsonburg already. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, just a point of clarification. The question was asked regarding taking the road out to Highway Three. It's a sensitive area that's being protected. Um, and so it doesn't appear that it's a good option, but thank you for bringing it forward. And furthermore, the town will be embarking on a very comprehensive master transportation master plan. Um, it was approved in the budget, so we will be looking at all roads, intersections and things moving forward. Thank you. Does council have any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thanks again, yeah.
Hello, my name is Nancy Kretschman. I also live on Esseltine Drive. And I have a couple of of, um, questions that I'd like to make. Firstly, uh, we were talking about Esseltine being a raceway. And I'm not sure that Andrea understands exactly what we mean by that. And since you can't get the map back up again, I wonder if I could just take a minute and show her what I mean by that. Andrea, would you mind? So what we're, what we're.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me. You can't actually, we can't actually have the applicant back in. Um, no, per presentation is done. So you can't actually. No.
You can ask questions of, um, Eric either?
No, you can, uh, we present to council. Sorry.
All right. I'll do it that way. Um, and maybe she can have a look on on her own time at the way Esseltine goes in a return and goes all the way around um, side of the school. If you go on to Esseltine in the morning, you'll see thirty cars parked there dropping children off at school. But once this, once they go through and this big return at the bottom of the park and back up, that's what parents are going to do. They're going to come in on Esseltine, walk around the corner, drop them off at the school parking lot and out they go. So those traffic studies that they're talking about are horrendous as it as it turns out. But they're going to be even more so every morning when children are being dropped off at school and every evening when they're being picked up because they're going to come in through there and they're going to circle around and they're going to drive out the other side. They've they've created a a real problem there. What the issue I'm concerned about is, uh, the median density that is west of the school. And I I understood Eric to say that that median density would allow retail on the main floor. And if that's the case, I'm saying that we're going to have retail of letting a single family residential on Esseltine. And that's a moral. And, uh, when they talk about, uh, median density, they don't really tell us. I mean, she's saying it could be stacked townhouses, could be stacked townhouses with retail, but it was my understanding. So I I heard Eric say, uh, I could be wrong about that. I may stand corrected if I am. And I still believe that the parkland should be stripped with median density. So the parkland is a budding the school yard and the green and the tree belt and the median density go in behind. And that way, we wouldn't be impacted by stacked townhouses possibly with retail. I can run our single family residential home there and on the sides. So that's all I have to say on the matter. And hopefully, I mean, we'll take some of these concerns into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric. Did you want to say something?
Yes, the commercial block or the commercial uses would only happen in the median density block next to Concession Street West. Uh, because there's direct access to Concession Street West material road. Uh, it wouldn't be on the uh, park block or the median density block adjacent to the park or the school.
Thank you, Eric, for the clarification. Welcome.
Hi, council. Thanks very much for giving me a chance to talk to you. Yeah, we having fun yet?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not going to rehash all the things that have been said about streets and Esselton and the.
Sorry, could you please give us your name?
Oh, my apologies. My name is Kim Yeo and I live on Fairs. Testing, testing. Okay, super. So I'm, I don't want to rehash all of the the stuff that people have already brought up tonight. There there obviously are some really serious concerns that the residents have. Um, I do have to, you know, sort of commend the the developer in making some changes. However, we need more changes made. And all I'm really wanting to ask you guys right now is, and we know that Building More Homes Act is going to override or potentially can override anything that's decided here tonight. But I am asking that you guys not endorse this as it is currently presented. Building is going to happen. We know that. But I think there's a lot of room for improvement. There's consultation that can happen between the developer and Baldwin Place. So all I'm here to ask is that we not approve this presentation as it has been presented tonight. Doesn't mean it's not going to be built in the future. It's not about not in my backyard. It's let's just take a little bit of time. Get the the interested parties together and come up with a better plan. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Gilbey, uh, town council. My name is, uh, Stephen Delala and, uh, I live at one forty-seven and also represent one fifty-one Concession Street West, uh, on the plan. It was indicated as the tree farm. Um, there are a lot of great, uh, uh, concerns here tonight. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't smart enough to think of them. When I wrote this letter to Eric back on October the third, I'm not sure if, uh, he forwarded the letter to you or not, but if not, I'm going to read it for everybody else here. My concerns mainly were for our property, um, which is going to have approximately four or five hundred meters of fencing and trees, uh, that currently exist around it that we're very concerned about. So I'll just read the letter. Um, and this was, this was addressed to Eric, who I did talk to. As per our telephone conversation on September nineteenth, I'm addressing in writing some of my concerns regarding the application of the for development of part of lots eight and nine concession left eleven, part of lot eight concessions twelve, Durham in the town of Tilsonburg. My wife and I, Sybil, Delala, represent regime and Doug Ross of one fifty-one Concession Street West. In our discussion, I identified three issues of concern as it relates to the proximity of this development in the relation to the west and south property boundaries of the Ross property. Along these two property lines are a row of mature trees, some of which are just inside the property line, some falling in the middle of the property line and some just outside the property line. It is obviously our desire to maintain all these trees. However, I do realize that this may not be possible. We would like to request a discussion with the owner of Victoria Wood G P Incorporated and ourselves to be arranged prior to the commencement of development in the proximity of these two property lines. We would expect and insist that any tree that lies fully on the Ross property remains standing with the exception for allowances of branches that may overhang the lands to be developed as per county guidelines. A discussion and plan of the remaining trees is requested. My second topic was of the type of fencing to be erected along these property lines. I fully understand that the type of fencing is reflective of the location of the remaining trees which line the property. We would also like a discussion regarding this item as well. Lastly, I would like to provide some input in regards to dedicated parkland allotted. I know that's already been brought up tonight, so we're all on the same page here. I do understand from our discussion that a revision of the parkland will be presented in a new plan draft later this fall, which is now out. Eric, I believe that you mentioned five percent must be reverve, reserved. I was expecting more. I'm disappointed in the fact that parks and green space is rapidly disappearing in the town of Tilsonburg. I have lived here for over thirty years. Our residential area and population have increased substantially and green space in re in relation has declined. Although I am receptive to new residential developments, I am saddened to see trees and green space disappear. I am sure that you and town council are well aware of what I am get presenting. We, my wife and I have created our own green space of approximately two and a half hectares through a Trees Ontario grant. We maintain this ongoing and wish to preserve it for future generations. Preservation of green space is of great importance to us and should be for the entire Tilsonburg community. Please pass this letter on to the owners of Victoria Wood and anyone involved in the development process. So all I would ask at this point is I want to be assured that the developer comes and talks to me personally regarding the trees on the property and the fencing that's going to go up around it. Um, it's very important to us. I have spent the last fifteen years grooming those trees in that property. I have not paid much attention to the property line itself at this point, but inside that property line, uh, we call it the arboretum and, uh, it probably takes me anywhere from two to three months every fall to maintain that. And I just don't want to see that disappear. And that is probably one of my main concerns about what's happening in Tilsonburg is the lack of green space and trees that we have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. My name is Hannibal Muttak. We live on twenty-three Jones Crescent. We just recently moved into town and we love it. So, uh, we've been quite impressed. I haven't prepared any statement, but actually, the reason why I'm here is because I'm concerned about what I've heard. Give me a background, not tooting my horn. I have my PhD in agriculture engineering. Do lots and lots of planning, establishments, research stations, places where people live. So I'm very familiar with the process, even though I'm not familiar with the details of this particular proposal. The concern I have, and I heard the the engineer or the presenter, the planner s- speaking to the effect that there are some things that have been thought through. And I I figured that if that is the case, then let's put the brake. I am for development. And my work, and I've worked in maybe over fifty-four countries, working with those kinds of development, pushes me to think holistically about the plan so that the development you would have would be perfect. And years from now, people will say, wow, council did a great job in reviewing, not in halting, no, but in reviewing and in ensuring that proper planning was done. The concern I have, and I heard, I'm not sure who I heard speak, whether it was Madam Mayor or somebody, saying that we are under pressure from political up there, that we have to do that. But that doesn't mean we have to rubbish them, whatever is being said. And doesn't mean that if a proposal that hasn't been thought properly and there's been lots of good proposals that have been put at the table, it doesn't mean that we push them aside. You are in a position of authority to de- to decide one way or another. And I pray, I trust that you will not just rubbish them something that hasn't been thought through. No consultation has been made with the Baldwin Place people. I suggest that you require that. Issues of traffic and security and and, uh, all of those things need to be done. Finally, I would say one thing. I'm going to borrow it from the Bible. Jesus was teaching the disciple and the people. He told them, you have heard it said that, that was the law. But I tell you that, and that was grace. It doesn't matter that the county, the province or the county or whatever force laws on you. There are lots of ways with which those laws could be studied, could be mitigated, could be done properly. And then you will stand tall because you've done the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from council to planning? Or are we ready to put a resolution on the floor? I am going to turn it over to Councillor Parker. This is an extremely lengthy resolution. Please allow Councillor Parker uh, the courtesy to get the entire motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gilbey. Just for the public, you will hear a lot at the beginning. There are conditions at the end of the resolution, so please let me get through it so that you hear what you want to hear. Uh, move by myself, seconded by Councillor Roseheart. The council approved in principle the zone change application filed number Z N seven twenty-two dash zero five, submitted by Victoria Wood, Tilsonburg West G P Inc. For lands legally described as part of lots eight and nine concession eleven Durham and part of lot eight concession twelve Durham in the town of Tilsonburg to rezone the lands R two S P, R three S P, R M S P, R H S P, O S one and O S two with appropriate holding zones to facilitate the proposed draft plan of subdivision. And that council advised county council that the town supports the application to amend official plan filed number O P twenty-two eleven seven, submitted by Victoria Wood, Tilsonburg West G P Inc. For lands legally described as part of lot eight, nine concession eleven Durham and part of lot eight concession twelve Durham in the town of Tilsonburg to amend the location and extent of the high, medium, low-density residential areas on the subject lands to facilitate a draft plan of subdivision. And that after consideration and due diligence by council to citizen safety, traffic volumes and EMS access, the council of the town of Tilsonburg recommends the approval of draft plan of subdivision file number S B twenty-two dash zero one dash seven, submitted by Victoria Wood, Tilsonburg West G P for lands legally described as part of lots eight and nine concession eleven Durham and part of lot eight concession twelve Durham in the town of Tilsonburg, consisting of thirty-two blocks for low dens- density residential development, two blocks for medium-density residential development, one block for high-density residential development, one park block, one open space block, served by ten new local streets, subject to the conditions of draft plan approval as stated in the staff report, C P twenty twenty-three dash eight zero, dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Plus, the addition of the following conditions are met and satisfied by council. The construction vehicles to enter into the proposed development from Concession Street onto Street A with the intention to minimize disruption to current neighborhoods and residents and that all in the vicinity be kept clean of construction material, garbage, debris, dirt, mud, gravel during construction for the safety of all citizens. And due to the proximity of the crosswalk located in front of Westfield Public School, council directs that Esseltine Drive not be extended as a through road due to safety and congestion in the area. And that council recommends to straighten Street F to allow easier access for EMS and that traffic calming measures be put in place to slow traffic on Street F. And that council supports Durham Drive and Grand U Drive be developed as through roads to access the proposed development. And that council recommends that as many large and existing trees as possible around the perimeter of the property be maintained and safe and free from demolition or root damage and that for every tree removed, it be replaced on top of the one tree per lot requirement. And that council directs the access through point at Street I to Weston Drive be eliminated. And that the request, that the number of dwelling units per multiple unit dwellings not apply to any stacked townhouses or back-to-back townhouses on block thirty-three and Or back-to-back townhouses on block thirty-three and thirty-four special medium-density residential. Uh, units or residential be denied. Like to speak to that, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think that this resolution speaks to a lot of the concerns that the neighborhood has brought forward. It is more about being good neighbors and. Coming up with ideas and making sure that everything suits the existing neighborhoods that are already in place. Um, I spoke about it earlier when I was speaking with the developer. And I think that we need to take into consideration the people that have been in our community and. Let our community grow to be as special as it is. We need to keep the sanctity of that, so. Um, that's where I'm gonna leave it and uh, we'll be there.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Um, does any other counselor have any comments or questions? No, this is a long one. I'm gonna tell you, a lot of work went into this. Um, this council had a lot on their plate, a lot to digest. We've listened to concerns, we appreciate safety factors. Um, you know, and I had reiterated in many emails, we hear you. You know, we do, we do listen and and take things seriously. Um, I do have one question, and it's regard to parkland. Um, and I'm gonna ask Eric, but it's parkland requirements have been reduced, am I correct, under Bill twenty-three?
The park requirements have been reduced for larger buildings. Familiarly, when you get over ten stories for an apartment building. Um, but for right. For this subdivision development, it remains at the five percent of the subdivision either in land or cash.
Right, okay, so it has, so basically that parkland is the maximum. Amount that is required, and it's affordable housing where there's no parkland required anymore, I think if I remember correctly.
That's correct, so the, this plan actually provides above the five percent. The park itself is the five percent plus it has the corridors in between. Uh, the blocks uh, as additional parkland.
Okay, thank you. So um, any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote, all those in pay, in favor of the red um, resolution. And that would be unanimous and carry. Counsel. Sorry, I just have to close out, just remember with Selena Planning meeting, council has approved in principle the zone change application. ZN seven two-two dash zero five, subject to approvals by County, Oxford County Council. A bylaw will be brought forward at a future meeting. And following its passing, there will be a twenty-day appeal period. So, thank you. Counsel is gonna rise for a five-minute recess because I think there might be some people that wanna vacate the premises. Ten minutes, ten minutes. Okay, so we'll be back at eight twenty-three. Um, we're ready to start if counselors will take their seat. Okay, so we're, we're gonna move along here. Um, next we're doing planning application for official plan amendment. OP twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash seven. Uh, this is a public meeting held under the Planning Act for the purpose of hearing zone change applications at N seven dash two-two dash one zero. This process allows any person in attendance the opportunity to speak to the application. If anyone who appeals this decision has not provided counsel with oral or written submissions at the public meeting. Then the local planning appeal tribunal has the power to dismiss the appeal. If you speak to this application, please state your name. And sign your name and street address on the sheet at the podium. And I'll turn it over to Eric, who will give a overview of the zone change application.
Thank you, this is another combined applications, official plan amendment, draft plan and subdivision and zone change. To allow for the creation of eighty lots for soon attached drawings, sixteen blocks for eighty-three townhouse drawings. One block for future medium density development in a new residential plan and subdivision. Uh, the proposed official plan amendment would redesignate block one oh four of the plan. Uh, an interior block uh, from low density to medium density residential. To facilitate the future development of a fifty-six unit condominium consisting of townhouse dwellings. Uh, the subdivision itself is designated low-density residential. Uh, it's about thirty-three acres in size and there's no buildings or structures present on the property. Uh, the applicant submitted in support of the application. Uh, again, a functional servicing report, a plan justification report. Archaeological assessment report, an environmental impact study. A transportation impact study and a geotechnical and slope stability uh, report and analysis. Uh, this subdivision, uh, there is no additional parkland dedication required. The developer, uh, in the previous, the previous developer. And if, uh, last phase of Rolling Meadows, uh, deeded, uh, the L-shaped parcel. Adjacent to the, uh, the existing park, uh, to the town back in nineteen ninety-seven. So no additional parkland is required in this regard. Um, they are taking a small portion of that, uh, uh, existing park walk. And making it into sediment storage area, drying area with a stormwater management pond. Uh, but they are providing a rail network uh, through blocks. Uh, ninety-eight, ninety, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine and one hundred uh, through the plan. Uh, so those will uh, be in excess of the five percent parkland dedication requirement. The submitted traffic study for uh, this development. Uh, considered both this development and the adjacent development uh, to the east. Uh, at the same time, so the, the study did take those two, it's the same. The same firm authored both reports, but they, they did include both studies, uh, both developments. As well as all of the existing development and planned development on North Street. Uh, identified that some intersection improvements are required. Uh, to facilitate the proposed development and uh. They are, uh, westbound turning movement. Um, on Broadway and North Street, uh, they'll need to extend the, uh, left turn movement storage. Some forty meters. And as well as on North Street and Colthard or Broad Avenue. Uh, they'll need an additional, uh, storage in the additional left turn lane. Um, and this can be accommodated within the existing, uh, street width. Uh, the conditions and recommendations of the traffic study are included as conditions of draft approval. The environmental impact study was submitted and was peer reviewed again, uh, to the town in, um, by the town and county. The, there's, uh, point two four hectares of woodland proposed to be removed. Um, that is to accommodate the alignment of Street C. Uh, shown on the plan, uh, that is a east-west, uh, plan collector road. Um, it's been identified since at least the, uh, nineteen ninety-nine. It was identified in the two thousand and five Stantec, uh, North Tilsenberg Servicing Strategy. So the, the, uh. There's some woodland removal that have to occur both on this parcel and the, uh. Adjacent subdivision to the east to provide for that connection. As well, the, uh, collector is eventually proposed to extend. Out through the, uh, driving course range, uh, to the west, uh, out to a new signalized intersection on Broadway. Uh, the timing of that part of the, uh, collector, uh, road being constructed is unknown. Uh, staff did have some conversations with some potential development plans with the owner of that parcel. And they were made aware of the requirement for that collector road. Uh, but likely it won't, that connection won't occur until those lands are developed. Uh, the EIS also, uh, reviewed the proposed removal of some woodlands for. Uh, sediment storage for the swim pond, as well as an outlet for the swim pond which will go into the existing creek and ravine. Uh, and it, the EIS also included a number of recommendations and mitigation measures. Uh, that are covered off in the conditions of draft approval. Uh, the functional servicing report indicated that, uh, the site can be, can be serviced with. Uh, municipal water and wastewater services. There are some water main upgrades required. And the applicant is aware of this and is working with Oxford County Public Works. To determine the timing and, uh, location. The existing water mains may not accommodate the required fire flows for the development. So the county and applicant are working on some, uh, there's six possible upgrades to optimize the flows in the area. Uh, so there are conditions of draft approval. For cost sharing agreements and, uh, which will be negotiated through future subdivision agreements. Uh, sanitary servicing is available through connections to, uh, the existing sanitary sewer on Boba Link. Which conveys flows down Tanner and to the recently constructed, uh, sanitary pumping station on North Street. And municipal storm sewers are required. Uh, the outlet for the storm sewers will be the, uh, swim pond located in the southeast corner of the site. Which will help upflow to an existing creek. Uh, with respect to the proposed medium-density block, the, uh. Eventual dwelling type is likely, uh, townhouses through a future plan of condominium application. Uh, the preliminary site plan shows fifty-six units, uh, which is within the permitted density of the medium density policies. Staff with the opinion that the, the designation of that medium-density block, uh, does comply with the. Official plan criteria for the identification of new medium-density sites. And the block is, uh, will be adequately serviced from the new infrastructure. In the plan of subdivision and will be large enough to provide the required parking and amenity areas. And no parking relief has been required for this medium-density block. Within the low-density residential area, there's a mix of dwelling types. Within the low density residential area, there's a mix of dwelling types proposed, including single detached dwellings and townhouse dwellings. The net residential density is twenty-five units per hectare, which is less than the maximum of thirty units per hectare. Abiding existing development on Boba Link, the developer is proposing to zone those properties to R one A zone, which would only permit a single detached dwelling. As well, there's currently four street stubs into this development. And based on feedback received from town and county staff, the two of those stubs, one opposite Robin Road and another one in between Robin Road and Woodcock. Those two lots are, those are supposed to be used for single detached dwelling lots. That would remain zoned R one to match the existing development. And the new street connection would be farther to the west on opposite Woodcock as well as to the east on Boba Link, which is the natural drainage flow for the gravity sewers. The requested zoning for the medium density block again has the request relief of the distance between buildings, which again, staff have identified this to be looked at through a future housekeeping update because this seems to be an impediment to medium density development throughout the town. As well as this block will be subject to site plan approval where matters such as lot grading, servicing, access, parking and landscaping will be satisfied to the town and county. The reductions in the front yard and rear yard depth and open space will apply to the outside of the development. They'll be served by a private internal condominium street which will provide all of the required parking. The requested zoning for the townhouse blocks is similar to the zoning in Northcrest Phase One and Phase Two. With an exception, there's now a proposed increased driveway width. That will allow more of the front yard to be paved and used for a driveway which will provide some additional parking opportunities for the units. And the other relief required will basically facilitate the successful townhouse developments in the area. The zoning provisions for single detached dwellings would provide for increased lot coverage and reduced exterior side yard widths for the lots that back onto Boba Link or existing development. The other single detached dwelling lots would provide for increased lot coverages, exterior side yard widths, reduced interior side yard widths, rear yard depths and increased projections, which is similar to other developments in the town in this area. There is also a request to permit additional residential units in the, on these, for these single detached dwellings. And the only stipulation to that is based on the criteria in the Planning Act that one additional parking space be provided and that that parking space can be provided in tandem. In light of this, staff are supportive of the application and recommend approval subject to the noted conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from council to the planner? Council Rosehart.
And again, I threw you, Madam Mayor, to Eric. And again, we're looking at traffic and the flow of track and it being clogged and plugged and congested. So I'm just wondering why, again, we're not looking at doing roundabouts to keep the traffic flowing. I don't understand why Tilsenberg doesn't look at roundabouts.
I think in this case, there may be opportunity for a roundabout at Street C and Street B or Street C and Woodcock in the subdivision, but I don't think there's enough space. Maybe Jonathan can correct me, but on Boba Link and Woodcock or Rock or Boba Link and Street A for a roundabout in the existing subdivision, just you'd have to buy land, expropriate it from the existing residential properties to come with a roundabout, but in this, the new plan, there may be enough space on Street C.
Just to follow up, Mr. Madam Mayor, through to Eric, is this something that the town would have to put in a bylaw if that's what we want in subdivisions?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Councilor Rosehart. There's certainly provisions for best practices as it relates to roundabouts. I may have the wrong proposed draft plan, but one of the visions, or one of the plans that I have actually has a roundabout exactly where the planner was suggesting. So I'm getting the nod from the applicant as well too, so I believe we are incorporating that. In this correlation, it's directly related to two collector roads, similar to the discussion from the last plan of subdivision. But that didn't only had one collector merging. So there is a proposed roundabout for this plan of subdivision, but to your point, it won't really be an effect and in use until future phase outs or build outs to the west when the connection happens ultimately to the arterial on Broadway Street. But that is the intention is that we will be incorporating more roundabouts. It has been a discussion with the manager of engineering. And so we'll be incorporating those design elements in terms of traffic coming.
Just to follow up, Madam Mayor, at this time, there's nothing in any of these subdivision that we're planning, a roundabout inside the subdivision. Nothing. Just going, going towards not in the future, not now.
Through you, Madam Mayor. In this plan of subdivision that's being considered tonight, the revised draft plan has the inclusion of one roundabout, which would, I'm gonna just, sorry, my apologies.
Is it Wood?
It is Wood, Rock and Street C on the northwest.
Thank you. Actually glad to see the inclusion of that. I'm also glad to hear about the wider driveways. So we can try and get some vehicles off of the roads. Are there any other questions or concerns to the planner? Seeing none. There is now an opportunity for the public, the applicant or agent to speak in favor of the application. And who's the lucky speaker tonight? Your duo. Welcome to the front. And just state your names for, for everyone, just so you're aware.
Thank you. Andrea is here with me and I'm Will Hayhoe, the applicant and developer. And I just wanted to introduce myself and thank council for considering the application. And certainly for those who are here in the audience, our engineer and Andrew to Andrea to assist and they've guided us and we've had great cooperation in preparing this application with the particularly the Engineering Services Department and the Parks Department and the integration, the existing park and so on. So I, I believe we brought forth a very favorable application and Andrea will speak to that. And I just wanted to introduce myself because we think of ourselves not just as a developer, but more of a community builder where we actually build the homes that are developed and that allows for some integration and cooperation. For instance, I know there's a topic of, okay, how this construction vehicle is going to get there and we can, we've done it before and working cooperatively with the town and various communities where you know, staff designate what route they want us to use and we use it and we work cooperatively. So I just want to affirm that we'll keep on doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a presentation. There's a presentation. I did bring a USB just in case. Thank you. Good evening again. I'm not a Boy Scout, but I try to be prepared, so I'm glad I had that USB. Again, my name's Andrea Sinclair and I will just go through, thanks for the introduction, Will, this proposed plan of subdivision. This is the proposed draft plan that's currently before you for consideration. It is comprised of predominantly single detached townhouse and cluster townhouse units. So you don't have to talk close now that we're a smaller group, as well as open space blocks planned for trail connections, park access, natural features and stormwater management. I don't know what that means. Sorry, it's just not advancing. There we go. So in terms of the road connections, this has already been discussed, so I won't go into great detail, but currently we're providing two connections to the south and in the future of time, there will be additional connections to the east, west and north, which will allow for traffic movements as the areas around potentially redevelopment, redeveloped. This is the intersection discussed, so it has been sized and designed so that it can accommodate. I wouldn't call it a full roundabout, more of a turning circle at this scale to help advance. And again, the number of units in this proposed draft plan really doesn't trigger or warrant a turning circle, but this is proposed just given what may happen in the future and making sure that those traffic movements can move well through the neighborhood. Just pointing out in terms of the unit breakdown, so everything shown in sort of the yellow color are the single detached. So well dispersed throughout the neighborhood, we wanted to make sure that the townhouses and the single detached are sort of interconnected. So each area of the plan has that variety. There is a total of eighty single detached proposed. And then in terms of townhouses, the large central block is proposed to be, I'll call it a cluster townhouse development, so it'll go through a future site plan phase and will be, I likely condominiumized. And then the other areas in the sort of orangey color represent the street townhouses that are proposed. So approximately eighty-three street fronting townhouses and we haven't determined the final layout for the multiple block, but it's estimated to be probably about another fifty-six units could be accommodated within that block. In terms of the natural feature stormwater management trails, one of the key design considerations when designing the subdivision and for Hayhoe Homes was to make sure there was a really connected trail, open space park network. And all of the open space blocks and the trail block, which is this east-west connection was purposely located so it would tie in with the park, it would tie in with a loop through the stormwater management and would connect into the existing park. And then additional trails are proposed where supported through the open space feature. And there was sort of a broader connection. So this in yellow sort of shows the movements through this particular draft plan of subdivision. But in terms of the broader community, there are other existing trails shown in purple and other future planned trails shown in yellow. So it really wanted to make sure that this subdivision was very walkable, that it was very connected to things that are happening to the the east and the south. And again, that informed a lot of the design decisions when preparing this draft plan. This is outside of the draft plan, but we thought it would be helpful to share and to show council. This is the existing park off Boba Link Drive and this is a proposal that I understand our client is looking at doing is in terms of having a little bit better access and some parking right along the frontage of that park. And that's something that they'll be working with the town on in terms of having that better access, a little bit of on-street parking. And while it's not part of, technically part of this application, as Will mentioned, they're community builders and they want to do this to benefit the broader community. And then in terms of the natural feature and restoration and compensation, as Eric mentioned, there was an EIS done and it was peer reviewed. And we wanted to ensure that any removal of vegetation and that includes removal of vegetation as a result of these potential future road crossings that we would be doing sufficient amounts of replanting and compensation. So when you see the comparison of the draft plan that was originally submitted on the left and what's before you today, what you'll see as the biggest changes, we had a number of very deep lots along street, sorry. Street C, those have now been significantly reduced in depth so that all of this area down here could be added to the open space block. So we're now actually have a much larger area of open space than what was originally prepared. And it's also more than compensating for what's being removed. So there will actually be more vegetation as a result of the subdivision than what's there currently. And that open space block, if you're a numbers person, increased in size from about one point seven six hectares to two point oh nine hectares. So it's an increase of about point eight two acres if you're, think more in terms of acres. And that might have been my buzzer, I don't know. I'm about done anyways, so just wanted to share that because I think that's important for council to see how much more open space has been brought into this final plan. And just in terms of some of the implementation measures, in terms of sidewalks will be provided, street trees will be provided. The tree preservation plans will be done as a draft plan condition. We expect homeowner brochures will be provided where you're backing on to open space and any recommendations from technical reports will be implemented. So thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does council, Council Rosehart and then Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, the speaker. So the ponding, is that going to be where the green spaces now?
So the, I just moved to the draft plan, so it's easier to see. So this swim pond will be, it's already green space now and a portion, a small portion of it's in the park block. So as mentioned by Eric, that portion that's going to come out of the park block is being made up for by this green section and the, and the trail. So it's actually an over dedication right now of parkland. But that's where the stormwater management block will be and there will be sort of a trail loop around it.
A follow-up, Madam Mayor? So that is, so the new subdivision that's going in there now, there's, there was ponds back there. That isn't on that land. This is on our land where the park is, where the trees were. There's a bush area in there. That, that was parkland, right?
Yeah, the, this was, a portion of this was parkland and I don't have the exact, yeah, thank you.
So the part that you're thinking, hi, Andrew Gilbazy. So the part that you're thinking of as the park is actually here and actually only extends to about this here area here. This, this area that is going to be the swim pond is actually cultivated field right now. There is no trees where, where the majority of the park is going. There's a little bit around the perimeter up and through here, but very, very little. Most of the pond is going in actually farmland right now.
Follow up, Madam Mayor. I'm just trying to, to focus on that. Is that by Tanager? Or is that further up from Tanager?
Tanager is right here. So this is quite a bit north. There's two homes right here. The pond will be right in this area. Right now, the existing park that you're thinking of is in here.
So the existing park will be removed?
No, will remain.
It will remain?
Will remain. The part that is, that is mowed grass right now will remain.
And the bush area, is that going to be gone?
No, that bush area all remains up and through here, down through here and then through here. And then there's, this is mostly grass with sporadic trees through here.
And then just to follow up, Madam Mayor, and then the water from the ponding that you're doing, where is that going to drain to?
That's going to drain through towards, there's a natural water course that flows through the center of here. So there will be an outlet that's constructed. I'm gonna say maybe here. That comes from the pond that goes to the natural water course.
And then just to follow up, that will flow into behind all the houses on Tanager to North Street?
Yes, the drainage channel that was, that was recently reconstructed by Northcrest Phase Two, it'll flow into that drainage channel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council Parker?
Through you, Mayor Gilbazy. More of a comment than a question. I actually appreciate the expanded green space that you guys have brought forward than what is actually required. It's very nice to see a developer go down that road. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Parker. I echo those sentiments as well. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is now an opportunity for anyone in attendance to speak in opposition to the application. I am seeing none. Are there any further questions to staff? Seeing none. I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Parker, who has a resolution to put on the floor.
Move by myself, seconded by Councilor Rosehart. The council of the town of Tilsen, or sorry, before, just for council's recollection, I did send out an amended amendment that I made to this from the previous emails from Eric earlier today. So move by myself, seconded by Councilor Rosehart. The council of the town of Tilsenberg approve in principle the zone change application file number ZN seven twenty-two ten submitted by Performance Communities Real number ZN seven twenty-two ten, submitted by Performance Communities Realty, Inc. for lands legally described as part of Lot Six, Concession Ten Durham and Blocks eighteen through twenty-one, Plan Forty-One M one forty-eight in the town of Tilsenberg to rezone the lands R one, R one A S P, R two S P, R three S P, R M S P O S one and O S two with appropriate holding zones to facilitate the proposed draft plan of subdivision and the council of the town of Tilsenberg advised county council that the town supports the application to amend the county official plan file number OP twenty-two twenty-seven seven, submitted by Performance Communities Realty, Inc. for lands legally described as part of Lot Six, Concession Ten Durham and Blocks eighteen through twenty-one, Plan Forty-One M one forty-eight in the town of Tilsenberg to redesignate a portion of the subject lands from low-density residential to medium-density residential to facilitate a future medium-density residential block within a proposed draft plan of subdivision. And further, the council of the town of Tilsenberg advised county council that the town supports the application for draft plan of subdivision file number SB twenty-two oh three seven, submitted by Performance Communities Realty, Inc. for lands legally described as part of Lot Six, Concession Ten Durham and Blocks eighteen through twenty-one, Plan Forty-One M one forty-eight in the town of Tilsenberg consisting of eighty lots for single-detached dwellings, sixteen lots for townhouse dwellings, one block for medium-density residential development, six open space blocks, one stormwater block served by three new local streets and the extension of Woodcock Drive, subject to the condition, conditions of draft, draft approval outlined in report number CP twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-one and subject to the following conditions set out by council. Though the concerns highlighted as followed with regards to the traffic study by Paradigm be included in the RFP for the master transportation plan, and for Broadway and North Street, the westbound left-turn movement is forecast to operate with ninety-fifth percentile Ks exceeding the available storage of forty minutes meters during the AM peak hour. These Ks can be accommodated with the existing two-way center-left turn lane on North Street. And at the North Street and Coldharris Street, North Street and Coldharris Street slash Braun Avenue, the southbound left-turn movement is forecast to operate with LOS E and a VC ratio of point four seven during the PMP hour. The low VC ratio indicates the delay is likely due to high volumes of traffic through North Street, which limits the number of available gaps for side street traffic. And that staff investigate the creation of an access road for construction vehicles to limit the impact on the existing completed neighborhoods.
Questions from council, Councilor Luciani?
Oh, through you, Madam Mayor, to uh, Council Parker, I'm just wondering whether the the last portion dealing with the uh, master transportation plan in the RFP. Should that be part of this, or should that be separate as in regard to the uh, when we get to uh, dealing with the master transportation plan?
Uh, actually, we can make an amendment with the secondary and I'll remove it, and I can actually put it in a notice of motion that I have later on tonight. Um, so we will remove those two paragraphs and uh, it'll speak to the master transportation plan then.
Great, thank you.
So is everyone agreeable to removing? Can you identify which two paragraphs?
And for Broadway and North Street would be the first one, and that North Street and Coldharris Street will remove both those paragraphs.
He's gonna move this to a motion motion later.
Yeah. And actually, it should actually be the concerns highlighted as follows with regards to the traffic study should also be removed.
Okay, so now council, any questions on the amended? Is the mover changed the motion? So we will call a vote, so that's with those three paragraphs removed. Uh, all is in favor? And that is carried. Council has approved in principle the zone change application ZN seven dash two-two dash one zero, subject to approvals by Oxford County Council. A bylaw will be brought forward at a future meeting date and following is its passing, there will be a twenty-day appeal period. Oh, congratulations. So, just have to find the next planning application here. We are now on eight point three, application OP twenty-two twenty-two dash nineteen dash seven. This is a public meeting held under the Planning Act for the purpose of hearing zone change application ZN seven dash two-two dash one five. The process allows any person in attendance the opportunity to speak to the application. If anyone who appeals this decision has not provided counsel with oral or written submissions at the public meeting, then the local planning appeal tribunal has a power to dismiss the appeal. If you speak to this application, please state your name and sign your name and street address on the sheet at the podium. I'll now turn it over to Eric, who who will give an overview of the zone change application.
Thank you, this again is uh, three applications to facilitate a residential draft plan of subdivision. The uh, overall purpose is to create fifteen blocks for residential development and one block for a future medium-density development in a new residential plan of subdivision. Uh, the proposed official plan amendment will amend the extent of the open space designation to coincide with the findings in the environmental impact study prepared for the development, as well as to facilitate a medium-density residential block in the northeast portion of the property. The draft plan subdivision consists of fifteen blocks for low-density residential development, a block for the future mediumness development, four open space blocks served by five new local streets, and the extension of Martin Street, Braun Avenue and Mallard Avenue. The lands are approximately seventy point nine acres and they're immediately to the north and east of uh, an existing draft approved plan of subdivision, uh, known as LYN Prop Phase One. Uh, there's no buildings or structures currently present on the property. Uh, so there's gonna be, that medium-density block is proposed to be a condominium corporation in the future. So there'll be a crossing of that existing water course. Uh, the conservation authority's concerns at this point are that um, applicant hasn't demonstrated that there'll be safe access from the block in times of flooding. Uh, so staff recommend that uh, the portions of the, of these applications affecting uh, that block north of the water course be deferred, uh, until the applicant has provided additional confirmation. Uh, similar to last application, the transportation impact study prepared by Paradigm uh, made some recommendations, uh, which are included as uh, conditions of draft approval. Uh, there was a noise and vibration assessment conducted uh, due to the uh, presence of the railway, uh, which is uh, still in operation, as well as the uh, uh, operation of vehicles on North Street. Uh, the study identified that a berm is required and a berm and noise barrier, um, parallel to the railway. And also recommended a forty-meter setback to the railway for any residential building foundations. Um, it also recommended uh, a number of warning clauses be included uh, for lots that are uh, in this area adjacent to the railway or lots that are in proximity to North Street East. And this is ca- uh, carried off, uh, um, implemented through conditions of draft approval. Uh, the environmental impact study that was submitted as part of the application was reviewed, a peer reviewed, uh, again, it was uh, required because of the presence of significant wetlands, valleylands and fish habitat. Uh, there'll be approximately uh, two point uh, four hectares of vegetation to be removed. Majority of that is to im- is to facilitate that planned collector road uh, to the west, uh, that'll go down to Braun Avenue and eventually uh, to North Street. Uh, the conditions of the uh, EIS and the mitigation measures, um, they are again, uh, included as uh, conditions of draft approval. Uh, the functional servicing report uh, indicated that, uh, again, similar to the application we previously heard, there's some water main upgrades that need to be uh, made to facilitate the development. And applicant uh, is aware of that and will be working with Oxford County Public Works uh, to make that happen. Uh, sanitary servicing is available and will occur through existing connections uh, to sanitary sewers on Braun Avenue, Martin Street and Mallard Street, which will convey the sanitary uh, sewage uh, to the new pumping station on North Street. Uh, in this case, there'll be an existing swim pond of the uh, draft approved plan to the south, uh, was designed to take into these li- uh, to take these lands. Uh, so there will be a condition that the previous subdivision plan has to be developed, uh, or portions have to be developed prior to this application uh, being registered. Uh, this application doesn't have uh, uh, individual lots proposed, similar to the first one we heard tonight, uh, this, this is a application of blocks. Uh, the blocks uh, could range um, from uh, up to three hundred unit residential units in the lower density area. And uh, the median density block could accommodate two hundred and twenty-two units uh, based on the uh, uh, density that's proposed. Uh, there are uh, public trail connections provided throughout the development. Uh, the applicant, the parkland on on this plan isn't, uh, hasn't been determined yet. Uh, the applicant's been working with the town's uh, Director of Recreation, Culture and Parks, uh, to provide a suitable location, um. It's expected it'll be in this, the southeast corner adjacent to North Street. Um, they're just working through the the final uh, details of that, uh, that would provide a good uh, pedestrian connection uh, to sidewalks on North Street, as well as the uh, the rail trail that's located in that area. Uh, there is a condition of draft approval included or recommended to be included, uh, that does require uh, the applicant to provide parklands in a dedication or cash and loan to the satisfaction of the town. Uh, the other location for parking was re- identified by the applicant, uh, was deemed to be unsuitable for actual parkland development by the EIS, uh, so that's the reason why uh, there's the change in the original submission. Uh, the proposed zoning uh, for the townhouses is similar to the zoning requested in the previous application, uh, this application also includes an increased driveway width uh, uh, of up to eighty-four percent of the lot frontage, uh, for parking purposes. Uh, and again, ARUs are requested uh, for the single detached dwellings um, in the, in the app, in this uh, sub, plan of subdivision. Uh, the other requested zoning reductions for the, um, for the uh, low-density uh, uh, low-density uh, blocks in the plan uh, can be si- considered appropriate and atypical of the existing and planned development in this area of North Street. Um, there's a portion of the plan that's actually within the township of Southos Oxford. Um, it is currently zoned A two in the township zoning by law, and no change to that uh, those lands will, um, will occur. Um, they would be created if the plan was registered anyways. Uh, so we, staff just recommend that a one-foot reserve be included to ensure that uh, services cannot be extended uh, out to that portion, although it's noted that it, currently it's just wooded, and there's no change proposed to that. And so generally staff are supportive of the application, uh, both subject to the modification for, to accommodate uh, parkland as well as uh, provide um, additional opportunity uh, to the applicant to provide detail regarding that median density block north of the water course, just to ensure that safe access and egress can be provided for that block. Uh, once that confirmation is provided, it'll be brought back to a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any questions, Council Parsons?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, it's been a long meeting, I, I don't know if you, I know, I know you did address the concern from the Director of uh, Parks Recreation, and it sounds like that's being worked on. Uh, I, I'm not in favor of cash and lo, I hope, I hope uh, we don't have cash, we need parkland for this development and and every development where there's this many residents. There's also concerns from the building and bylaw services. Did you address that in your comments? The applicant suggested O S two S P zoning, which would permit an accessory structure within the recommended buffer area identified in EIS subject to an Arbus report is not feasible. Is that, is that being addressed by the developer?
Madam Mayor, to Councilor Parsons, so we, we did, uh, broach that subject with it, with the developer. And uh, we, you know, communicated that the building department doesn't have the staff or resources or time for the Arbus reports, and typically in the town, uh, we've always zoned those spaces and rear yards that are subject to the buffer to be uh, passive use open space, uh, so that's included in the recommendation, and I believe the applicant and developer is okay with that at this point.
Any further questions? Seeing none, there is now an opportunity for the public, the applicant or agent to speak in favor of the application. Peter, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. I don't know if Amelia's able to put the, the draft plan up for us tonight.
No, we're having technical difficulties.
My wife is watching at home and she said that she can't see it.
I think we're still streaming, but I'm not sure. Oh, it's audio? Amelia says we're still streaming, just so everyone knows, we are still streaming. Um, but.
Okay, I'll speak to the subdivision here, uh, Eric did a great job going through everything, I uh, can't say I had anything to uh, pick apart with that, and the development is going to look very similar to uh, Northcrest Phase Two, which was uh, originally uh, LYN Prop subdivision. And that uh, the HAVO said, uh, developed, and also to the south, uh, LYN, or uh, south, north, Northcrest Phase One, sorry. Uh, similar uh, density we're looking at with that, so the mix of townhouses. Uh, we were around seventy percent townhouses in both of those developments, and that's again, what we're targeting with this. Uh, we left it as blocks, and I know when we did the previous phase for LYN Prop Phase One, which is uh, approved last year, uh, council did uh, uh, ask about it, and on this plan, you can see all the lauding and the townhouses and uh, and all the single-family for Phase One that's been added to it, and we came very close to the uh, density targets that we had, we had spoke of at that time. A couple of things that uh, with the traffic reported had recommended uh, Mallard be made a collector, uh, only up as far as Street D. And hopefully, I, you, you'll have access to the plans there. Um, and then uh, comments from town staff, they had asked that Mallard be continued as a collector uh, all the way up to St- Street C and then across back to Braun, so that we have a collector going around the outside there. And there is a significant medium-density portion that's being built along the east side of the property, and Eric mentioned up to two hundred and twenty units could go in there. And we did do a concept plan that uh, could meet all the required setbacks, it was with stacked townhouses. And it could be knocked down a little bit, but we still need to meet that medium-density uh, requirement through there. Uh, one of the rezoning things uh, that happened with the Street F had uh, uh, was zoned as medium-density, and we've moved that all along the east side now, so Street F of Phase One was dropped down to uh, low-density. Uh, but overall, uh, we've increased the medium-density area. The part that the conservation authority was questioning across the creek to the northeast there, uh, again, that's all a, a medium-density piece, and that, it's, it's owned open space or the official plan had it that way, and uh, it was actually farmed land, and if you go uh, look at the aerial photography from a number of years ago, that was all farmed, it had a driveway that was built through there. Uh, but with the larger equipment, it became impractical for the size of it, but uh, uh, it did have uh, a designation for future development, so we have shown this uh, development, it would be one-sided, we still have to maintain the buildings forty feet, uh, forty meters away from the railway. Uh, so there would be a, a, a road that goes alongside uh, the railway and actually some green space that we could uh, do some plantings along there, so we'll uh, work towards satisfying the conservation authority with the access across the creek and uh, have to bring that back at, at a future. and uh, have to bring that back at, at a future date. Counselor Roseheart, we did get a roundabout on this one. Uh, there was one on the previous phase on Braun at Streets C and B. They intersect there. And this one's up at the north and uh, Street G. Uh, so that's an intersection of two collectors there and that heads uh, west over to uh, the Rolling Meadow subdivision that we looked at uh, earlier. So there, there will be a roundabout and there is one just before you exit uh, the Rolling Meadows there and continue out to Broadway eventually. So we are trying to put them in. The what else I have? Uh, there was, uh, Eric did mention the water uh, volumes here that we need and primarily it's not for the uh, domestic use, but it is for fire flows. There is a required uh, connection across the Rolling Meadows uh, subdivision, uh, the north end. And the county is working uh, to, to also extend a piece at the north end of bobbling to connect to the twelve inch that runs alongside and behind Sobi. So uh, that's all been in the works and uh, is covered in uh, uh, various reports. Uh, so that is, is a requirement to do the full build out of this. And the rest of the servicing, the sewers are all in good shape. Comment and questions about electrical, the electrical, there's no current concerns with the uh, ability to service this. The uh, infrastructure's been put in the ground with the switches and the phasing to service this subdivision with the previous phases. And we do uh, show uh, T H I the overall concept, so they can do that. Some of the other things that change in uh, servicing, there's the uh, overall transformation capacity from hydro one. And that's always being advanced along and the large industrial developments uh, that come along can consume a bunch as well. So the, there's no concerns with electrical servicing for the subdivision and T H I had commented that generally adding additional residential is uh, are, are low demands compared to the larger industrial demand. So that the currently there's no concerns. This should all be serviced if uh, if C F S remains uh, successful and bringing a industry to town, then they, they may need more hydro overall, but uh, no concerns at this time yet. That's all I had.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from council? Seeing, I guess you did such a good job. We don't have any questions.
I think the dragging it out of the previous one to make it work in my Thank you.
Thanks. So um, now there's an opportunity for anyone in attendance to speak in opposition to the application. And I'm seeing none. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, Counselor Luciani.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Parsons that the council approved in principle the zone change application file number Z N Z seven dash twenty-two dash fifteen submitted by Lindrop Corp- Corporation Incorporated for the lands legally described as parts of lots four and five concession ten Durham and the town of Tilsenberg, specifically the land south of the water course crossing on block sixteen to rezone the lands R three dash S P, R M dash S S P and O S two with appropriate holding zones to facilitate the proposed draft plan of subdivision. And that council advised county council that town supports the application to amend the county official plan. File number O P twenty-two dash nineteen dash seven submitted by Lindrop Corporation Incorporated for lands legally described as parts of lots four and five concession ten Durham and the town of Tilsenberg, specifically the land south of the water course crossing on block sixteen to redesignate a portion of the subject lands from open space and low density residential to medium density residential to facilitate a future medium density residential block within a proposed draft plan of subdivision. And the council advised county council that the town supports the application for draft plan of sub- subdivision file number S B twenty-two dash zero seven dash seven submitted by Lindrop Corporation for lands legally described as parts of lot four and five concession ten Durham in the town of Tilsenberg consisting of fifteen blocks for low density residential development consisting of single detached dwellings, semi-detached dwellings and townhouse dwellings, one block for me, future medium density residential development. Four open space blocks served by five new local streets and the extension of Martin Street, Braun Street and Mallard Ave. Subject to the conditions of draft approval as stated in staff report C P twenty twenty-three dash eighty-two dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor and that would be carried with none opposed. Council has approved in principle the zone change applications that N seven dash two-two dash one-five subject to approvals by Oxford County Council. A bylaw will be brought forward at a future meeting date and following its passing, there will be a twenty day appeal period. Um, item ten point one, Lauren Johnson couldn't stay and uh, we have Cedric as item ten point two, who's been waiting patiently for a very long time. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and uh, the council, thank you for listening. I'm pleased to bring you a little bit of lighter context of your evening. Um, and that's to do with the uh, Kinsman Club and of course our ever so famous um, Tilsenberg Kinsman Easter egg hunt. Um, again, the Tilsenberg Kinsman Club is all about serving the community's greatest needs. This is an event that we're extremely proud of um, that we've been serving uh, to our community for the past three decades. Um, it's been an extremely widely participated event and most um, record numbers really last year as we kind of got back to having events. Uh, in the past two years, actually the Kinsman Club has worked extra hard to um, bring in more things to do at the Easter egg hunt. So it's not just like the ten minutes of frantic children uh, flying all over the field and fighting each other for that little golden egg of chocolate. Uh, and we're just really proud of what we've brought and how the event has grown and how we'd like to get it to continue to grow. And we just really look forward to bringing that event um, more and more. Sorry, I guess I should be actually using the slides here that I'm talking about and I put in all kinds of fancy transitions. Um, so we're really pleased to, to continue to bring that event. This is just a pull on your heartstrings because everybody likes kids that are smiling. Uh, and that's what we get year after year after year. Uh, so with any growing event, we have additional requirements. In this particular case for us this year, it is by way of adding a few of the outdoor facilities that are located at the Memorial Park. Um, to be able to just, again, it's just to grow that event. Uh, as we grow, we need a little bit more space. We're planning on bringing in um, some additional uh, food options this year and things like that. So just taking more space and needing the pavilion. And we'd also like to use the ban shell that is so famously named after Kinsman. Um, so these assets are typically uh, rented by the town, uh, facilitated by the town at the community center. Um, those are the prices ninety-nine, twenty-five apiece, total one ninety-eight, fifty. So basically we're just coming to council tonight uh, as a recommendation by our director of Parks and Rec to ask for those to be waived for this year and all future years. Uh, as long as we continue to kind of host this event. Of course, um, should, you know, this council want to continue to see me year after year, I'm happy to come back and do this presentation uh, again. Um, but you know, I, I think, you know, we could call this like a life membership for this event only, of course. And uh, just uh, approve something, this ask in principle, I guess, for this year and all future years. Further to that, I think got nothing to do with that, what I'm asking, but just for this council to maybe open up um, that bylaw that exists around how we govern, um, you know, facility rentals and uh, you know, service organizations that are providing events to our community. And maybe we could take a look at that and allow some of our departments to, you know, I don't know, up to a certain value, waive fees for certain facility rentals as long as they fit a certain criteria or something. I think a policy could be looked at to achieve that so that there's not this time that's being used uh, when you have obviously much more important matters to, to handle. So that's all I have. Sorry to keep it so short, but I know we're, we're all gotten kind of weary and uh, just like council to consider that waiving of fees for the upcoming event and future events. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, um, I'll make a comment. I remember when um, it came back last year and all the, um, there were extremely positive comments all over social media and I think coming out of COVID, people were just so excited to, to have this event. And um, I remember it being extremely positive. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll pass that on to our members.
Counselor Spencer, you have a resolution?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Parsons, that council received the delegation from the Tilsenberg Kinsman as information and that the Memorial Park be donated free of charge for the use of the Easter egg hunt for the year of twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Would you like to speak to that? Counselor Parsons, okay. So um, I did think that Cedric, Cedric has made um, you know, a viable request that maybe we look at some sort of policy moving forward. So um, I think there is something right being looked at. Am I correct, Julie? Yes, she's shaking her head yes. All right, perfect. So um, if there's no questions, I will call the vote. All those in favor. And that would be carried. Next, we're moving on to an information eater, item, which is a letter. And I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Parker who has a resolution.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Roseheart, that council receives the letter to council from Mike and Sandy Clofer dated March tenth, twenty twenty-three as information. And the council supports the decommissioning and sale of the C N R L K line in Norfolk County from Fernley Road to Talbot Road. And that this resolution be forwarded to Norfolk County and score. I'd like to speak to that uh, mayor. Um, so I had the opportunity to meet with Titan Trailers. Um, when we um, when we originally uh, recommissioned uh, the section of land, um, they own the portion of industrial land that is covered by the railway. Um, however, um, this resolution itself doesn't speak to actually us physically closing it or giving permission to. It's just supporting their recommendation because they would actually like to purchase that section of the rail line to help with um, a housing development that they're planning. Um, because they're trying to house their employees and they're struggling with it. So um, this is uh, an opportunity to help out a local business and show support to them. Um, to help uh, essentially grow our industrial community in town as well. So um, it doesn't actually affect us. We're just giving support. Um, we're not actually closing it until C N Rail makes that decision. So I'm just asking for council support tonight.
Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Luciani?
Um, through, through you to, I guess to C F S in regards to uh, how does, does this affect the uh, everything that's been going on up to this point as far as supporting uh, the rail line and is this, would this be an issue?
Uh, through the mayor to uh, Counselor Luciani. I certainly am supportive of uh, Mike and Sandy Clofer and of course are big um, investors in our town as well. I would like to say that I think that the request is a bit premature. Um, in the sense that we've just reopened this line uh, as of January of last year. And uh, while their lands may not be available for development, the lands, the line uh, does extend past their property as well. So I think that we're looking at supporting the viability of this line. I would say that we should leave all options on the table at this point. I haven't seen any information that suggests that this would, this line would stop their development. So I'm unsure as to what the concern really is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? I think the line is in operation to Townsend Lumber. Am I correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, right now their, their last customer in the line, if you will, is Townsend Lumber. The line does extend a number of kilometers past that. That's correct.
Counselor Parker?
Uh, through you, Mayor Gilvezzi, to C F S. How many other industrial lands are um, passed that uh, the land that Titan Trailers currently owns? Or the Clofer zone?
Through Madam Mayor to uh, Counselor Parker, I, I don't have the answer to that. I wasn't expecting a motion in this regard. Um, so um, what I will notice that when we did the analysis, uh, the beginning of this process, there was over a thousand acres along this line, most of it to the east. Um, and so I, I'm not sure there's other parcels of land in this area, but I would have to look into that. Thank you.
Counselor Luciani?
I'm just um, just a comment that it, it, I'm not too sure whether this has gone to economic development already or whether they've had any comment on it. But I know that they were supporting score before doing what they were doing as far as the rail, I believe. Um, I'm just wondering whether this shouldn't just be deferred uh, to another meeting till we get a little bit more information.
There is a score meeting coming up this week. That's why I was trying to get it on the agenda for now. So that's, that, that's why it's here tonight.
The agenda did come out for score, so I don't, it's Thursday, the score meeting is on Thur- on Thursday. So I'm not sure if it'll make it or not. So Counsel, Counselor Luciani, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just wondering about making a motion to defer.
Yeah, we can defer it. Um, uh, you need to put the motion on the floor to defer with a secondary.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer seconded by Counselor Parsons.
Okay, so you're deferring it, but you're sending it to economic development? Um, is that the intention? That's a reefer. The clerk is telling me that's a reefer.
R and D. Okay, reefer.
It's getting late, right? Okay, so now we've vote, we've got a mover and a seconder and we vote on the reefer to active. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so it's going to active. So now we move to a finance thirteen point four, council remuneration and expenses. Is Renato presenting? Sheena? You don't, like, there's a report. It's just, who do we ask questions to? So I mean, there's a report that we've all read. Do you have any further comments of the council remuneration and expenses?
Good evening, council. Um, no additional comments other than this is just an annual report that is presented of the municipal act. And it includes all remuneration and expenses incurred by council and execution of council's duties.
Perfect, thank you. Um, any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, uh, Counselor Parsons has a resolution.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's moved by, where is it? It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Parker. The council receives report F I N twenty-three oh six, twenty twenty-two, council remuneration and expense report as information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor and that would be unanimous. Okay, so uh, thirteen point five fire and emergency services and we have an agreement. Um, staff want to make any comments? This is a fantastic fire chief.
Now, through you, Mayor Gilvezzi, council, this is a good news item. This is, so uh, I will be quick. I know it's evening's a little long in the tooth, but uh, uh, the, the current nine one one system uh, has reached end of life and is uh, must be replaced. The C R T C has mandated that all communication centers or P S apps um, must upgrade to the new Um, must upgrade to the new next generation nine one one technology standards. Uh, this new nine one one technology will. Enable things like text to nine one one, video to nine one one and advanced GPS location. Uh, information which will enhance the current nine one one system. Uh, the mayor and the C A O. I met with the Solicitor General as well as other government officials uh to advocate on council's behalf. Um, for our share of the NG nine one one funding. Uh, the mayor and the councils with council's help uh was successful in acquiring a one point two four five million dollar. Uh, investment in NG nine one one through the Solicitor General's uh TIPON. Transfer payment uh to upgrade the nine one ones standards. Um, the Ontario government has committed two two hundred and eight million dollars over three years. So eighty million uh from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, eighty million from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, and then forty eight million. From twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five to help fund the transition of the nine one one system. As council knows, operating a PSAP can be a very costly. Um, adventure to operate and maintain particularly with rapid advancement in technology. So this funding opportunity is welcome news for the town of Tilsonburg. Um, we'd like to thank the Ontario government for recognizing the significant impact on budgets upgrading. At to NG nine one one standards has on smaller communities like Tilsonburg. Uh, and thank them again for this funding commitment. The province currently funds one hundred percent of EMS and OPP communication centers. And we would like to see this funding support continue for municipal PSAPs into the future. Earlier this month, uh, the province announced Tilsonburg's share of the two twenty twenty three, so twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three grant. In the amount of one point two four five million uh for eligible. NG nine one one expenses occurred incurred between that time. So we've been attempting to identify um all eligible expenses incurred during this time period and want. To acquire as much goods and services related to nine one one as possible to offer to uh recover. Uh, as much as possible from this funding opportunity. Uh, the report. List the broad description of the eligible expenses the town can submit for under this application. Given the extremely tight frames involved, the report recommendations ask that uh the mayor and clerk execute the agreement. Um, to open up access to this funding. And council grant the fire chief authority to purchase NG nine one one related equipment services. Enter into agreements, including sole sourcing where necessary to maximize the recovery of this provincial funding opportunity. Our goal is to recapture as much of this one point two four five million uh in eligible expenses for twenty twenty three. Or twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three as humanly possible. Uh, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Transfer payment guidelines should be announced shortly and hopefully uh allows for more appropriate timelines and guidance. And I'd be happy to take any questions council has.
Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, a very good report, chief. As you say, a good news report. Uh, my question is, uh, where was this funding going to come from with without the grant? Uh, was this within the current or in the ten year forecast uh? Uh, for for the for us to fund through taxation?
Through Madam Mayor to Counselor Parsons. So essentially what we were going to do was charge back our customers, so our partners and our communication partner alliance. So. We would fund it and then quite frankly, the uh. Through the shared partnership agreement, we would all pay for these infrastructure costs.
Just continuing and and we ourselves pay part of that for our own customers here in Tilsonburg. Uh, there'd be a levy against uh our 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 own folks in in Tilsonburg and our own budget. Is that correct? We will have some savings, in other words.
Uh, through the mayor to the council, but absolutely, we will have some significant savings with this funding opportunity for sure.
Anyone else? This is excellent news. Um, just looking to see Counselor Spencer, you have the resolution.
Uh, thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Roseheart, that report FRS twenty three dash zero two titled T P O N. Agreement execution be received. And that a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the transfer payment agreement for the town of Tilsonburg. Fire and rescue services, fire communications, PSA. P N G nine one one agreement be presented to council for consideration and. Let the fire chief be authorized to purchase NG nine one one related goods, services and enter. Into a NG nine one one agreements required to maximize eligible recapture of NG one 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 costs. I think I said too many ones there. Included sole sourcing. Where necessary to ensure timely acquisition and standardization with existing hardware, software and services. And that the fire chief be authorized to complete Schedule E financial report next generation funding. For the transfer payment agreement on behalf of the corporation in order to maximize. The recovery of all eligible NG nine one one related costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
How long will this be lot good for? Like what you're upgrading? How long will it be good for?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Roseheart. Uh, it's hard to say, quite frankly, uh, the technology changes uh rapidly in this space, but uh this should. And the last one was in. Place for thirty years, but uh we didn't have the system technology we've seen, but uh I I would expect it would be in place for a while.
Now follow up, Madam Mayor, through you to the speaker. So would there be a clause now that we would put in all contracts? That we would have some kind of a buffer zone to recapture something down the road if it happens again to us, if we need upgrading?
Uh, we may go go to Counselor Roseheart. Yeah, we 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 have a standard clause in the current agreement. That allows for recapture of stuff like this, but having said that, with the government uh paying for. Or funding this model, it's been a a welcome surprise for us.
Anyone else? That's fantastic news. Um, great job for putting a good application in that was successful. Um, so I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Uh, that's carried with none opposed. Uh, we now we are moving on to um thirteen point six operations and development law maintenance by law, and I'll turn that over to Jonathan.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor, the consideration before you is to um. And the recommendation reflects the clean and the cleaning of. The lands and clearing of refuge dead and decaying trees. It's essentially uh a housekeeping item as it relates to our clean yard bylaw thirty eight ten. Uh, that was considered in council in August twenty twenty one. Um, and there is an appendicized schedule of these sections that have been changed or and or expanded upon. Uh, furthermore, upon our uh public consultation period sent out, we had two notices come back. Generally seeking clarification on the proposal and one on authority. Barring any specific questions, I will open the uh floor for comments or questions.
Questions from council? Counselor Parsons?
Yes, thank you. And it's a it's an excellent document. It uh moves our community forward, I believe. In terms of some of the um. Maybe the ongoing complaints that the town receives from time to time and. Those doesn't have the tools to resolve them. My a couple of questions. One is um. Does this um pose any concern about? Because with rules, there's enforcement. So is there going to have to be more enforcement relative to this or? I I believe a big a big part of this is education. We educate the community about these rules, but I wonder if there's going to be more cost relative to enforcement. Sorry.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Parsons. Um, generally, the approach in the bylaw enforcement component is this is a housekeeping matter, although we had many. Components that we were cleaning up in terms of standards today. It was more of a consolidation into our maintenance. So. These are items that are usually seen on site when we're in there for other infractions. So it generally is assumed that we won't be increasing the expenditures. Um, however, we do have an annual, we should be annually reviewing our bylaws to bring them up to snuff. For today and the expectations for the general council. Uh, if there's an impact, that would certainly come back for council's consideration through budgetary process. Mesh offers us a wealth of information in terms of capturing some of the activities. And we have a great resource in allocating that over to staff in terms of time. Uh, so those are annual uh discussions that we'll have through the budget conversation.
Just a subsequent question. Uh, I can't see it right now in this document, but it talks about the cargo um. Containers that can be on a property thirty days after the sale of property. And I think that's what people put their furniture into to move. Um, what what about people that are moving into a home? That are bringing their container. I don't see any allowance for people to have their container. After they, because they don't always move on, you know, when when the property sells. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And that is a good point of clarity. I will investigate further, but I think in one breath, we would expect that that's a reasonable. Uh, request from the resident moving in, but uh if we do need to circle back, I will certainly uh clean up the wording for sure. And certainly note it for the next time we revisit this.
Thank you. Good questions. Anyone else? Seeing none, Counselor Luciani, you have the resolution?
Yeah, moved on myself and seconded by Counselor Spencer, that a bylaw to provide for the cleaning and clearing of land, clearing of refuges. Uh, dead and decayed trees, graffiti, storage of commercial motor vehicles and recreational vehicles and yard sales be brought forward for council's consideration.
Thank you. And if further questions, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor and that would be carried. Allos opposed? Counselor Rosa, I just need to confirm that you're you were in favor of.
Madam Mayor, I had a question.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see.
I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just wondering on yard sales is or garage sales you got in here. Is there a limit of how many a person can have?
Uh, through Madam Mayor to uh Counselor Roseheart, I believe it is two or three per year. Two per calendar year.
And who would monitor that?
That would be through our bylaw enforcement in terms of noted activity. Um. It's a little bit discretionary in terms of when the first call would be received of if it's an infraction infraction. Based on the third time they had it. So we would always give the benefit to the resident unless there's clear. Uh, unless we could clearly defend, remember, these all have to go to the courts if we if we go through that avenue. So we have to clearly defend that we've noted two or more in order for us to get there. So it probably draw the line in the sand around the second one. And then we'd look at the uh activity that could be on site. So it is driven by bylaw complaints. Uh, in the lines share unless we know of habitual issues which we can uh look at more frequently.
All about Madam Mayor. Is is that really a big concern, Yard Tales in town of Tilsonburg?
It has been noted for general housekeeping. Um, in terms of complaints, I could look into that further and provide communication to council if that would be sufficient.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I do need to clarify if you're in favor or opposed. In favor. That was unanimous. Thank you. Um, recreation, culture and parks. Uh, Julie, do you have any comments on your report? No.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's um council had given direction to staff to report back on the land acknowledgement and the report is showing the findings of my research. Thank you.
Council have any questions? Seeing none, Counselor Parker?
Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer, that report R C P twenty three dash sixteen land acknowledgement update be received as information.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Counselor Parker, advisory committee minutes?
I would actually put a motion to defer on both of these until the minutes are updated. Um, because I don't think that they've been circulated and there were some discrepancies in both minutes. So. Um, bring them back for the next meeting. Uh, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Roseheart, motion to defer or refer defer or reefer on this one?
Was it deeper?
Deeper.
Am I correct?
Uh.
Differ to the next meeting.
Yes, typically typically, these are just here minutes, sorry, through the mayor to the counselors for procedural wise, these are just in front of you, not for ratification, but rather that you're aware. Uh, the bodies themselves would ratify the minutes if there were noted comments that needed to be changed. So the advisory committee minutes would be dealt with individually by those committee minutes. It's here, just so you're aware of the activities that are going on.
Okay, so the the question with this is they haven't actually physically been back to the committee for comment yet.
Uh, through the mayor to the counselor. I'm still learning your processes as you're uh, you know, three month on the job clerk, but that is typically your practice here is that you're putting in. For min- minutes in front of council uh just as information and then they get ratified at the committee and they noted. So there is a possibility that they change between council. And when they're actually at the advisory committees, but certainly if you have concerns, then I would suggest just not voting on these and they'd be returned when they're amended.
We will we will put a motion to defer on moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Roseheart.
Any questions? Concerns? All those in favor to defer? Uh, that's unanimous and carried. So those will come back once they go to the committee and the committee takes a look at them. Uh, Tilsonburg Police Service Board minutes, Counselor Roseheart?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer, that council receives a police service board minutes dated January eighteen, twenty twenty three as information. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Questions? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor? And that would be carried. Uh, notice of motions, Counselor Parker?
I'm going to pull the one that is on on currently. Um, due to the fact that there was other information that was not correct earlier when I put it on the floor. So I would like to remove this one from the floor and I do have a second one that I'd like to read. Um, and it's actually just a notice of motion um that a. An option for roundabout traffic late or other measure measures at Durham Drive and Quarter Town Line be investigated. To ensure the utmost safety will be achieved in the vicinity of Westfield Public School. And that this forms part of the Tilsonburg Transportation Master Plan. And that the concerns highlighted in the paradigm traffic study from the Performance Realty Corporation be included in uh the Transportation Master Plan as well.
Okay, thank you. So that'll be dealt with at the next meeting. So next. Yes, can you just forward that to Amelia? That would be great. Thank you very much. Okay, Counselor Luciani?
Yeah, moved on by myself and seconded by Counselor Roseheart, that bylaw. To amend bylaw twenty twenty dash zero nine one being a bylaw to adopt and maintain a policy with respect to the delegation. Of the Corporation of Town of Tilsonburg powers and duties and bylaw to amend bylaw four zero one nine being a bylaw to regulate and. Control the granting of encroachments on highways and public land within the town of Tilsonburg. And a bylaw to authorize a transfer payment agreement, fire and rescue services, communications, PSAP. And the bylaw to uh provide for the cleaning and clearing of land, clearing of. Refuge uh dead and decayed trees, graffiti, storage of commercial motor vehicles and recreational vehicles. And yard sales be read for first, second, third and final reading and that the mayor and clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the same and place corporate seal thereon.
Counselor Parsons?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's uh like to move uh by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer. That the bylaw to amend bylaw four zero one nine. Being a bylaw to regulate and control the granting of encroachments on highways and public land within the town of Tilsonburg be dealt with separately.
Okay, so council, what we're looking to do is take out the second paragraph, just to remove that and deal with it separately. So first, we're voting, we're voting on the motion to separate. Questions, concerns? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? So that's unanimously carried. So now um we're dealing, so now do we deal with this one or the rest of it? All bylaws.
Bylaws not separated.
Okay, so now we're going back to Counselor Luciani's. Resolution minus the second paragraph. Any questions, concerns? So we're voting on paragraph one, three and four. All those in favor? And that would be carried. And now we are going to uh Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer. That the bylaw to amend bylaw four zero one nine. Being a bylaw to regulate and control the granting of encroachments on highways and public land within the town of Tilsonburg be amended. To strike the following words from section one, bullet point two. I quote, that are stamped and sealed by a professional engineer, end quote. Like to speak.
Go ahead.
If I could. So we are dealing currently with the onset of the patio season that begins, that's the patio season for restaurants in the service of food and beverage in Tilsonburg. It starts on April 15th. And there was a resolution come to council last meeting where the BIA wanted to put together or offer to those restaurateurs the opportunity to have a patio, and it was going to be funded 75% by the BIA. And since that time, there have been other, other points of view expressed where people may want to have their own patio. So in that original BIA report that came to council, I don't know how the wording got in there, but it was about the engineer stamped engineer stamped design, if you will. And we are going to need some time to investigate this further. So we want to give people, restaurant owners in Tilsonburg, an opportunity to continue as though they were perhaps through COVID. But following, you know, the new alcohol gaming rules, for example, it only allows a license for eight months, they'll have to follow that. They're still going to have to follow the AOD regulations and stipulations by the building department and public health, for example. And so we're going to need some time to come back with the, what we call a permanent patio program. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, when you say we, you're talking about the BIA?
Excuse me, I shouldn't be using the word we. I am the chair of the BIA. We had a meeting this morning, a kind of an emergency meeting to have this discussion because timing was important. So it is not we, you're right.
Just wanted to clarify for the rest of council. Any questions or concerns? Counselor Parker?
Would it not make more sense to defer this bylaw till more information can come back versus just striking stamped and sealed professional engineer?
Thank you. We've, we've had a lot of discussion today on that, whether we would take that course of action. But it's really important for the restaurant owners to have the opportunity to move forward. And there are a number of restaurant owners that have expressed an interest to carry on with the pop-up patio program. So we'd like to really keep it moving forward, but have the time to, to come up with a better it's not we, excuse me, the BIA would like to have the time to come up with the, a more, a more improved policy. Thank you.
Jonathan, did you want to make a comment?
Through your worship and just for council's consideration, there are other provisions as it relates to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission that need this bylaw to be endorsed in order for the program to be here. So if there's a suggestion, it would be to strike this one component because it's not governed by the overriding legislation, but rather move ahead with some of the provisions, especially related to AODA.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Carried. And then Counselor Parsons, right back to you.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer, that bylaw to amend by law 4019 be in a bylaw to regulate and control the granting of encroachments on highways and public land within the town of Tilsonburg is amended, be read for a first, second, and third, and final reading, and the mayor and the clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the same and place the corporate seal thereon, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And carried. Counselor Roseheart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Parker, that bylaw 2023-032 to confirm the proceedings of council meeting held on March 27, 2023 be read for the first, second, third, and final reading and that the mayor and the clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the same and place the corporate seal thereon, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? That would be carried. Items of public interest, CFS? Counselor Spencer?
Just congratulations to Team Tilsonburg who brought home the gold medal for Special Olympics. Had the pleasure of playing against the team Lead William at the Community Curling Barn Spill back in December, quite an incredible curler. So congrats to all there. Thanks.
Saw that on Facebook. It's, thank you for bringing that forward. Counselor Roseheart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Julie, I have a question. I had a few phone calls this morning about the complex keeping the pool open for another two weeks. They got noticed this morning at 10 o'clock. A few were a little upset because they'd ever gone other places and already purchased the right to stay there and swim. And then they heard that the pool here is going to be open for another two weeks. Is it two weeks or four weeks, or is it going to be closed in two weeks? They weren't very happy this morning.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to, did you want to take it? Is that what you're telling me?
Go ahead.
Through Madam Mayor to Counselor Roseheart, yes, there was some last minute adjustments that we were working on for the schedule. We were working with staff on Friday. We had confirmation today to move ahead with that. Counselor notified as soon as we were made aware and we sent that out to all our members. It is right now taking us to April 8th, bringing forward an update on April 11th at council meeting. So we will have the pool open until April 8th for programming and AquaFit and fitness classes. We do apologize to the community. It wasn't our intention. We are reacting very quickly to the pool situation. So I know Andrea fielded a lot of calls as well, and there was some apology shared with them. We're working with fingersaw as well. They're taking on some of the supplementary activities. So they're aware of the situation as well. So my apologies to anyone that was affected by that.
I do follow up. There was no way you could send it out. Oh, sorry.
The clerks informed me that items of public interest are items of public interest, and there can't be debate. So, sorry. So anyways, the clerks informed me, maybe if you do have some questions or concerns, you could email them to Director Columbus. Counselor Parker?
I got a couple of things. First is yesterday was Purple Day. It's a day to celebrate or to raise awareness for epilepsy. And it's usually typically done by epilepsy southwestern Ontario. So our clock tower was, or is, has been purple all month for epilepsy awareness month. So it's, it's a great opportunity to learn more about it and bring awareness to the community. The other that I had is I'd like to send congratulations to the U11B, the U13C, the U15B, and the U18B boys, Tilsonburg Minor Hockey Teams, who will be representing Tilsonburg at the OMHA Championships this coming weekend and next weekend in municipalities outside of Tilsonburg. So they will be traveling to Barry and Windsor to compete, and we wish them luck.
Thank you very much. I also did see that on Facebook as well. There was quite a list of them.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I'm happy to announce that our Director of Finance/Treasure, Sheena, has returned from Maldives. So welcome back, Sheena. We're happy to have you at our first council meeting.
Clerk? Counselor Luciani, Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Nope. That's good. I've got nothing to add. Oh, you do have something. Go ahead.
Just two quick announcements for council and the community. We want to say thank you to everyone for the outdoor rink. It has officially closed. And we had a very busy season out there, but we had our longest season ever. So great job to the team over at TCC to maintain that facility. And I also wanted to let the community and council know that this weekend is the Tilsonburg Figure Skating Show. So there's two shows on Saturday. If anyone's looking for something to do, it's a great opportunity to support the Figure Skating Club. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll be looking to Counselor Parsons for adjournment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Spencer, that the council meeting of March 27, 2023 be adjourned at 9:59 PM. Thank you.
That's a long one. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you.